Good evening to you all and welcome to our regularly scheduled work session for the month of September. And as we usually do at these meetings, we dispense with some of the preliminary items and jump right into the meeting. So I'll begin tonight by asking our Assistant Town Clerk to call the roll if she will.
Mayor Marshburn?
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tem Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Vance?
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, councilmembers, for your presence here this evening. We'll jump right into the meeting with the adoption of the agenda. You all have that before you there. I'll entertain a motion for adoption unless you need to make a change or alteration of any kind.
Same move.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Singleton. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? There is none. Thank you very much. Okay, we have several items before us this evening, and most of them are discussion and information items, but I think there's a couple that are action items. So we'll begin with the first item listed on the agenda. McLeod Stewart, I guess, is here this evening to lead us through this process, or they're online, I guess. Is that right?
Jay is here. Jeff is online, and he may want to make some introductory remarks. There he is.
Yes. Jeff, I recognize you for any introductory remarks you'd like to make, sir. Jeff Trezenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the council and Planning Commission members in attendance. As has been custom here for this process, we're now at meeting number four for the Joint Planning Commission and Town Council meetings for implementing the Unified Development Ordinance, hopefully around the April timeframe. And so, once again, Jay McLeod with Stewart is here to present to you tonight. And the topics for this evening will be those that are found in Article VIII of the current UDO, which are our subdivision regulations, which have to do not just with subdividing property, but providing street infrastructure, utilities, and things like that. So Jay, I'll let you take it away.
If you'll give the mayor a point of privilege. Jay, I meant to recognize Planning Commission members who are here. If you will, just why don't you stand? Let us recognize you. Okay, two members here tonight. Okay, thank you very much. All right. Okay, Jay?
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. It's nice to be here. Jay McLeod with Stewart, based out of 223 Southwest Street in Raleigh. It's okay, I'll take this off.
Get off, yeah.
Thanks for having me back again. As Jeff mentioned, this is four out of five meetings to kind of go through section by section the different updates and highlights of the Unified Development Ordinance update. And today is to talk about subdivision regulations. So please forget the cover slide there. I always forget to change those. Subdivision regulations. So just to be clear for people that are watching at home perhaps, we're talking about the process by which land is cut along imaginary lines and then sold or transferred or developed. We're not talking about the more colloquial term of subdivision as in a residential neighborhood, although certainly residential neighborhoods are created by the process of subdividing land and developing it. And I'll go into kind of a little bit more about that. But basically, just kind of as a reminder where we are, we're right now talking about Article VIII. I think up next, at the next joint meeting, would be Article IX, which would then wrap up, and then possibly some additional kind of recap. And so I'll move into the article subdivision, the article outline. It's basically split up into four subsections. The process for the dedication, which means the giving of certain items to the town to take care of in perpetuity, the items in the public rights-of-way generally that support the uses and the homes and businesses that occur on those streets. So that's typically streets and pipes, right, and curbs and gutters and stormwater pipes and water pipes and sewer pipes, possibly electrical as well, although Duke typically handles that here, I believe. So and then there's requirements for open space and recreation to make sure that new subdivisions of land can provide for the public recreation needs that those residents will have. And then there are also standards for streets and utilities. So just kind of a bit of process for those that may not know. Typically, the way the development process goes is someone identifies a piece of land, and it's either zoned for what they want to do or not. And they will then either get a rezoning or bring in a site plan or a subdivision plan to the planning department and then run that through the approval process. And that's what we kind of call the entitlement phase. At that point, the land would be, if it's approved, would be entitled to develop according to the plans that were submitted. And those plans have to match the dimensional standards and the use requirements of that land based on its zoning district. So basically, when the council rezones property, they're saying that this land is suitable for the uses and the densities that are prescribed in the zoning ordinance. And that's kind of the beginning of the entitlement phase. And after that, you have the more specifics about like exactly where the lot lines will be, exactly where the streets will be. And the planning department makes sure that those streets and lot lines and lot widths and lot sizes match up with the standards that have been prescribed in the Unified Development Ordinance, in the zoning districts. So at that point, the council's basically said, this land is suitable to develop at the intensities that we see, and that means that we're going to, you know, take over these streets and support this development and maintain those so that these areas are profitable. So then after the entitlement phase happens, the developer would go into basically horizontal construction, which is pipes and streets, right, things that you generally don't see, nothing really sticks up too high, electric streets, sewer lines, water lines, et cetera. And then after that happens, the developer comes in for a final plat, and that's when they can actually record that subdivision of land and then start selling those lots. And then at that point, the town is also probably set, or given some indication that they will take over those streets and maintain that infrastructure. And then after that, you have what a lot of people think of as development, where a building is constructed, and that's really vertical construction. And then that goes to the building permit process. So sorry for the long, but I just want to make that distinction for those that, to kind of reiterate that we're talking about the process of accepting public facilities, streets and pipes and infrastructure, and then chopping up land to sell and develop it. So kind of back to the article itself, we have standards for performance guarantees that are consistent with the recent state's 160D legislation. Basically, that means if someone cannot install all the pipes before they go to that final plat, we have a way to ensure that they will. And basically, the town can require up to 125% of the costs so that if that person doesn't install those, then the town has the money in escrow to go and complete those improvements. There were very few other changes to kind of the dedication of public infrastructure. It's basically an administrative technical process. In terms of open space, we did make sure that we increased the standards for what is considered open space. We now have landscaping requirements for very narrow strips. We also further kind of refined the definition of what are desirable in these conservation areas or open space set-asides. And we have a minimum 10% requirement. And then you can kind of see there in those pictures, in the top picture, you kind of have a vegetated berm that might have been considered open space previously, but now it might not because it's not wide enough and you can't actually recreate or, you know, do outdoor things there. It's more of a landscaping buffer than it is open space, per se, even a passive open space. So we increased the standards there. We also have evaluated the open space standards for parkland dedication, so the process by which the town makes sure that there's enough park and recreation areas to serve the residents. And trying to make sure that there's connectivity between tracks where open spaces are dedicated so they create longer contiguous tracks, notwithstanding who develops when, but just kind of make sure that there's some continuity there. And then there's, of course, a standard for how much open space should be provided per dwelling unit, whether it's a single-family detached or some other type. And these kind of apply mostly to residential uses because those are the, obviously, the users of parkland. And then there's fee-in lieu requirements for those that can't so that the town can amass money to purchase a parkland in other areas. Yes, sir?
Okay, ask a question.
Well, probably, but I was going to ask Jay if he has a preference in terms of the flow of the presentation. Any, is it to your?
It's up to you. I mean, it's up, it's up to you. It's not a very long presentation, but it's comfortable.
Okay. Well, sometimes I know it's helpful if persons ask questions, I guess, when you strike a chord with him at that time. So Phil, we'll give it a try this way. Council will be just sensitive to the timeframe and letting him continue. But go ahead.
Okay. I just happened to see this word, "single-family detached, one acre per 29 homes." What is it now? Is it that same thing?
Gosh, you know, I don't have that number on my fingertips as to what it is now. Maybe that's a question for someone from the, in the planning department currently. Maybe Jeff or one of his staff knows that right away. It's a pretty typical measure, though, is that three hundredths of an acre per house. It's a pretty typical standard that we see in a lot of jurisdictions.
Okay. Because I'm probably going to ask you a lot, what is it now?
Right. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't have that on my fingertips. Of course, the subdivision article talks a lot about streets because those are basically the platform upon which people build wealth in the town through investment. And so we kind of make sure we have updated right-of-way and road width standards. And there's been a lot of coordination with the engineering department, obviously, as they kind of oversee the inspections related to public infrastructure and make sure those standards are met. The connectivity between neighborhoods as they develop is very important. You can think of a gridiron neighborhood layout, just crossing 90-degree roads is probably the most connected, and then different varying degrees afterwards that, where neighborhoods maybe start involving curvilinear streets or cul-de-sacs. And it's important that property, as it develops, provides stubouts to adjacent undeveloped tracks so that the development can proceed logically, and we have a well-knit-together neighborhood or community at the end of the development process. And so there are standards based on the zoning district with an understanding of how intense development will occur. And so the, kind of the least or most permissive districts are listed at the top of that table, and then kind of the more intense districts are at the bottom, including the, and these are, you know, using those kind of acronyms we have as abbreviations, but I-2 would be industrial, heavy industrial, I-1 is light industrial, and then you have RA is the agricultural, rural agricultural district. And then you have varying degrees of neighborhood commercial, higher intensity commercial, and then more intense residential development, getting down to the R-8, which is a proposed, essentially, almost a 4,000-square-foot lot district, but it's really eight dwelling units per acre. So 4,500, 4,700, at the, at the most intense it could possibly be. And then the downtown and the Activity Center District, having shorter block lengths. The connectivity index has been kind of updated. What we had previously was, we did not have this kind of objective standard. And so basically, this involves taking the links of roads and the intersections that they connect, and then doing a little math, and you come up with a ratio of links to nodes, and that's our connectivity index. And the more connected things are, the more they resemble that graphic at the top with kind of the lots of intersections and lots of little connecting streets. And that would be what we'd expect to see more in the Activity Center District, the AC. But then as we get, and we kind of move down the transect, and we kind of get towards the more rural zoning districts like rural agricultural and R-2, which is two homes per acre, larger lots, we would expect to see less connectivity, more curvilinear streets, but we still do want some connectivity. And I'll go through an actual real-world example of this in a second, which will probably help it look a lot better. But so that would be kind of this, on the bottom of that graphic, would be a less connected neighborhood, less connectivity. So the example is Greenbrier. So I don't know when Greenbrier was, you know, subdivided and developed, but it just provides a great example because it's, for the most part, contained and easy to tell where it is. And so I took the, you see, all the little red lines are me counting up the links. Those are the road sections between intersections, the roads, links between intersections, and then the nodes, which are the intersections. And those I counted with the little blue ticks. And so Greenbrier would be zoned R-4 in the remapping. It's currently R-9, which has to do with the size of lots. And its connectivity index is about 1.55, which is greater than 1.3, and so it would be an acceptable subdivision design. And that's an objective standard that staff can administer, that can lead to better-connected neighborhoods that allow for efficient dispersal of traffic and provision of services, including emergency services, deliveries, trash pickup, et cetera. I couldn't help but also point out a few opportunities that might have been missed in Greenbrier when it was developed. And so that's what those three arrows are calling out, areas where during that subdivision process, it maybe didn't connect to adjacent rights-of-way that were on paper, or maybe make appropriate connections to other streets that would have increased its connectivity and tied it in more tightly with the rest of the neighborhood. So I kind of went ahead and just poked at those because I really like connectivity, and I think it's very important to building a neighborhood. But also to point out that even with those three opportunities not taken, it still would have been, it would have passed the muster of this current proposed UDO. There are standards for sidewalks because they are part of the transportation network and are included in the right-of-way. Although this picture shows a street tree between the curb and the sidewalk, for the most part, that's not what you'll see in the Garner, development in Garner in the future because the street trees are currently located right on the outside of the right-of-way, and they are going to stay that way, except in some of the more dense districts like the downtown and the Activity Center District. And then you can see, we kind of have different sidewalk widths, standards for those different districts based on how much walking you would expect to have in those areas and the other services that the sidewalk provides, like the potential for outdoor dining in kind of the higher districts or outdoor sales in like the downtown district. The utility section involves a lot of the rest, so water, sewer, fire hydrants, electric, phone, underground utilities, et cetera. A lot of this is being shifted to the engineering manual, which is being updated as they kind of relate to construction standards. So basically, we're trying to move any kind of construction-related specifications to the engineering manual, and then be administered by the engineering department, and then keep location, general location and design, you know, use and massing and building and kind of alignments in the zoning, the Unified Development Ordinance, the zoning and subdivision regulations. And that kind of wraps that up. I do have one more slide, kind of about where we're headed next, if that's okay, and then I'm happy to answer any questions. Basically, we have another Planning Commission Council review, probably in November or December, where we'll talk about the remainder of the ordinance update, and then tentatively anticipate beginning commission and council review and adoption hearings in February, March, and April. And so that would, since this is an ordinance amendment, just like any other ordinance amendment, I know you all are very familiar with that because you've been through a couple, it just goes through the regular legislative process. Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, let's see if we have questions or comment. I'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Behringer, if she has anything. Okay, Mr. Singleton, anything?
Jay, can you go back to the, there's only districts where we're changing?
Is this a good slide?
Next forward, one more. You said that, so what was formerly R-9 is going to be R-4.
Correct.
Okay.
Do you want me to give kind of a quick summary of that conversion?
Yes, please.
Okay. So currently, the way Garner's residential districts are shown is that the number, whether it's R-15, R-20, R-9, represents kind of the thousands of square feet for the minimum lot size. So what we've done is kind of flipped that, and now R-4 is four dwelling units per acre gross density, which, when you do the math and you have 43,560 square feet to an acre, and then you take out the public rights-of-way, you could still put four homes there. It roughly winds up being about the same lot size overall. What it does is it gives the developer a little bit of flexibility to say, well, the land was kind of weird over here, so maybe this one could be 6,000 square feet, but the 3,000 that would have been in there is now going to be in this one, so it's going to be like 12,000 square feet. So it gives them a little bit of flexibility to hopefully maximize their lot count without, you know, running up against a somewhat artificial minimum lot size. Does that make sense?
You're saying that R-4 zoning, which would be four dwellings per acre, the lot size is going to all be different?
They can be, yes.
Like we have the exceptions in our, in our PRD zone right now?
Correct.
So is that going to be common in all those zoning classifications now?
In the residential.
Residential zoning classifications.
Correct, correct, yeah. There are still minimum lot sizes in the commercial, non-residential districts, but basically, the RA residential, rural agricultural, residential agricultural, it's going to stay that, it's about one unit per acre. R-20, currently 20,000-square-foot lots, about two units an acre, is going to become R-2. And R-9 is going to become R-4. And then R-8, we're not really mapping anything to that in the remapping, but it's going to be an option for developers to request and council to decide whether or not it's appropriate to have kind of a very tight urban, small lot neighborhood in certain locations. And you might see it as an infill, or it just gives that option. So people don't have to do the PRD just to get the smaller lot sizes. There's an option, and they can be told, yeah, it's appropriate or not yet.
Okay, so I know we're not at the stage yet, I may be getting ahead of the game, but what you just talked about with our eight zoning, which I'm assuming is eight units per acre where you can infill. So that, that zoning, where is that zoning classification going to be in today's existing? I mean, if you've got R-15 or R-12 around here in some of the older neighborhoods, Forest Hills, Heather Hills, Edgebrook, Greenbrier, there are R-15 or R-20. So how does R-8 fit into that?
Right. So in the remapping that's currently accompanying this, and I should point out that residents and concerned individuals can go to the project website and find that map and slide it back and forth, see their old zoning district and their new zoning district. R-8 is not actually being attributed to any land, it's not being mapped onto any land. There might be one tiny neighborhood that's already at those densities that is, but it's basically being brought forward as an option, but not placed anywhere preemptively.
Okay. And these residential districts, I see the R zones, but it does also include multifamily, because you've got multifamily 1 and 2 on here also.
Correct.
So it includes all residential district, not just single-family detached?
Correct. So, wait, say one more time?
It includes all residential districts, not just single-family detached.
The connectivity index?
Excuse me?
The connectivity index includes that, you're asking?
Well, I'm looking at this, yes, yes. So I mean, you have the different, I mean, multifamilies also included in this because it's residential, correct?
Yes. So in this connectivity index, basically, it's saying that the streets have to have a certain, and this kind of plays in with the maximum block lengths as well. They have to have a certain amount of connectivity among the streets and different ways to get places based on essentially how intense the land use is. And so it's, what it's saying there is that, yeah, the R-4 and the MF1, which is the low-intensity multifamily, and the NC, which is neighborhood commercial, all have roughly the same intensity of use, although the uses will be different by those, and the development standards are also different, the structural designs for setbacks and heights and so forth, but that they should at least have street networks that are roughly the same, and then that allows them to evolve, as they evolve, and we go through 50 years, 100 years, those uses may change based on the zoning, but the street network is really what is the most lasting thing. And so the street network with that connectivity is basically capable of supporting the uses that might develop in those different neighborhoods.
Okay. I was going to ask.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dellinger, I'll go to you, sir.
Yeah, there's a question, kind of based off what he said, also just a comment, having served with Councilman Behringer on that committee. We had our last meeting, and I wanted to extend thanks to Jay and his team for their hard work, and Jeff Trezenberg and Mr. Hodges for facilitating a lot of that, and thanks to all the committee members. There's some here. We had very high attendance throughout the entire process, which was really impressive, and also very high participation, too. So it was a good process, so thank you. My only question, and Jeff mentioned this, he hasn't read through the whole thing because it's, you know, not quite baked, and it's a lot. But on this minimum lot, this lot size issue, in, with the zoning change, are the minimum lots, is there a minimum lot size, or is that going to be then just determined by setbacks and how much house you can fit? Because the units per acre is obviously determined by the entire project, not literally every acre. So what you have is higher density and lower density. And so I guess my question, did we land on a minimum lot size, or what, where did that fall in this process?
Yes. So the control, so there's basically three ways to control lot size or neighborhood character. Really, we're concerned about the character of a neighborhood, right, how intensely it's developed, how many people are there, how it feels. So there's things that control the design and the appearance, like setbacks, whether it's a front or side, especially, really, side setbacks matter a lot in that calculation. But then there's also basically how many homes are on that street. And so the three are minimum lot size, minimum lot width, and then, because buildings have to be of a certain size generally, and then density, right? So and here we're talking about gross density, so the whole tract before streets and environmental areas come out, the whole tract. So what we chose to regulate were minimum lot width, which kind of controls the character of the neighborhood, and then density, which controls, you know, how many people are on that block, essentially. And the advantage of this method is it gives flex, it still controls the number of people and the character of the neighborhood through the width, because essentially, a building is going to be a certain width regardless. And then when you factor in things, like you said, like setbacks and so forth, it kind of forces a general trending toward a minimum lot size throughout. And then also, it gives the developer a little bit of flexibility so if they have a steep slope, they can, you know, narrow up that lot, and then maybe that goes into another lot. But overall, they're still hitting that density ceiling for that district. And you won't have any more than four homes per acre in an R-4 district. That's just the ceiling. And so it gives a little bit of flexibility to utilize the land more efficiently, but also we still have those controls for the setbacks and the spacing of buildings and structures.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, Mr. Vance, anything?
No questions.
Field, did I get to you? Okay, nothing. I'm going to try to engage our planning members as much as possible, so any- I'm going to try to engage our planning members as much as possible, so any questions from any of you from planning? Yeah, it would be good if you would go to the podium there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Blasko, Planning Commission Chairperson. Jay, again, thank you for the process, it's been rewarding and really enjoyable. Just one question about open space, if you could give a little more, maybe a little bit more background into what some of the controls are. I recently had a conversation with a planner in another town locally who, they have a similar 10% open space requirement, and what they've found is they end up getting benches here and there, which constitutes open space, which is really not what they want. So can you talk a bit about maybe some of those parameters that are set on the open space, what's allowed, what's required, what's not allowed, and how we can make it valuable open space and not just a bench put on next door storm pond and call it done?
Right, sure. So we did, we do actually have, speaking of a stormwater pond, we do actually have the ability now to use portions of a stormwater control facility, stormwater control measure as open space, provided that certain things are installed, like walking trail and benches, and it meets a certain size, kind of based on the comments that you provided a week or two ago, two weeks ago. So we do have that capacity to kind of double count that land. We, there's, generally speaking, people think of open space in two types, one is passive and one is active. So active is more heavily developed, it might be like a top lot or a playground, or maybe some sports fields, or some sort of investment that turns the land from just brushy woods or some cleared grass to something where there's some kind of more traction. And a greenway is a great example, and greenways are definitely high on the list of desirable priority active open space, especially as it fits into implementing the town's greenway planning connections. But then with passive open space, it is meant to be kind of more like lower investment, it's just kind of like, we don't want it to be the leftover spaces, but we don't necessarily need to have it cleared, graded, developed heavily. What has happened in, what does happen occasionally in places that aren't careful, is that as a developer creates their subdivision plan, and they look to maximize their lot count, and then the leftover spots are what become open space. And whether, if that's a 30-degree slope, or it's, you know, wetlands, or it's a swamp, or it's something that's just not developable, those are oftentimes what kind of gets left, and maybe that is useful if that's an environmentally sensitive area that we want to protect, and maybe that's a priority for the town. But often, we want at least some portion of that leftover swampy wet space to be something where people can walk through and watch a bird, or have the kids go play in the dirt and, you know, find worms or whatever. So we did kind of establish that priority system to, to kind of help provide some guidance to staff as they work through those subdivision plans and make sure that it meets kind of the standards of being flexible and, but also responsive and accountable.
So that is, that flexible far as when it's been presented as a subdivision, for example, and they take some of those spaces, some ups, good, some bad, is there a unit of measurement there, or is it just kind of, you said where I'm going with this, how do you determine if that's fine, that'll be acceptable?
Right.
Or half of it is, what's that unit of measurement? How you determine that?
I believe we did a couple things, so I think one of the things that was happening was that stream buffers were often being counted, and stream buffers you can't develop anyway, those are areas within a certain distance of perennial streams, and that has to do with the Neuse River Water Protection Rules. So that's often a candidate for a developer to want to say, "Hey, there's that open space you said you wanted, it's in the stream buffer." But it may or may not be usable in the sense of like, there's not access to it because it's behind a bunch of lots and you can't get to it from the street, so if you live on the other side of the street, it's not really open space for you. And so we did kind of establish some, I think, some rules about access, and then often, I think we also have a standard in there about the percentage of open space that can, that needs to be outside of those mandatory set-asides, because that's kind of a mandatory development hands-off set-aside.
I have a more follow-up question about the open space. Is the 10% residential specific, or is it applied to all the different zoning districts so that industrial has the same requirements as residential, or do they vary, or not have it at all?
Gosh, I haven't looked at that section a while. I'll have to go back and double-check that. I'll have to go back and double-check that.
I think, back to my previous anecdote, was I think they're finding these uses that may be a big, you know, 100,000 square foot warehouse that has to dedicate 10% of open space that's usable. Does that really make sense for residential? Absolutely, maybe 15 or 20 even, but for that industrial use, which is a warehouse or factory, is it really?
Right, right, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like that would make a lot of sense to start making factories, put parks in between them, right?
Okay, thank you. Was there any question from your other member? None, okay, thank you. I think I know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. The fee and lieu, that formula process hasn't changed any under these, this rewrite, right?
It hasn't. I think it might have been updated recent, not too long ago by you all, but it hasn't changed as part of this process.
Okay.
We just recognize that what's been adopted.
Got you, thank you. Okay, council?
Yeah, just one very brief comment on the stormwater as an amenity. That was an example of a good conversation we had about, instead of having these retention ponds with these fences around them, find a way to activate that space that's already being used for another requirement, and so it actually helps the developer, kind of kill two birds with one stone. So, like I say, we had some really good conversations around a lot of different topics in that committee.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from council at this point? Mr. Trezenberg, are you still with us? Anything else you care to add, sir?
Sure, I am still here. Just to circle back on a couple of things, Mr. Matthews had asked, I believe, at the very beginning about the rate of parkland being dedicated. I don't believe that that has changed from the existing ordinance, so the rate of how much acreage per residential unit is still being held consistent. It's that price you pay as the fee and lieu that we've been playing with recently, and you all made some changes to that, but I believe the rate of acreage per household has stayed the same. And then as far as the open space, currently it is just residential that has open space requirements, whether it's single-family or multifamily. Anything that is not apartments, townhomes, or single-family does not, does not fall subject to the, to the open space, and I think we maintain that system as well. So yeah, that's, I think, pretty much it that I wanted to touch on. Jay did touch on the lot width regulation for the residential districts, so thanks, Jay, for touching on that, because that is, was a critical part of our committee's discussion on how those residential districts will work.
Okay, Jeff, and I'll ask you one other question from your perspective. I guess the schedule that had been set out originally, are we pretty well still on that? Behind yet?
Sure, it slipped a little bit. I think how we had it laid out with Stuart when we first signed the contract, we're still getting it done and drafted in that period of time, but because we do have, you know, the adoption process, I think it has slipped, you know, just a few months, but overall, since we made those adjustments early on, knowing that that was kind of happening, we've been sticking to that, that goal of April of next year for quite some time, so still, still hopeful that we will be able to meet that.
Thank you, sir. And you answered my other question, that is the projected time to bring it to a conclusion, April next year. Okay, thank you. Anything else from council? And let's see, will you be back for our next meeting, Jay, or will somebody else?
I think it's the November or December meeting, yet to be determined, I believe.
Okay, all right. Okay, council, nothing else. Thank you again for your very able presentation there. Some of this stuff even, even helped me in the early portion of explaining the grids and so forth, so thank you very much.
Thank you, it's a pleasure. Hope you all have a good evening.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, council, the next item, I believe, is coming from our town engineer, Mr. Johnson, engineering website updates and new GIS tools. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. So yeah, the presentation tonight is to try to give you guys a kind of a brief overview on some updates that we've made to both the engineering website, as well as some new tools that we're rolling out that'll help both internal staff and with council's authorization, also some of these tools could be made public facing to provide more information, data to the public on certain things, such as pavement resurfacing program and capital improvement projects. So first off, I'll jump over to the website. I've got a capital improvement program webpage that kind of allows people to easily get to the types of projects they're looking for. Obviously, this will come in more and more handy as we start rolling out more design projects and construction projects, especially if the upcoming transportation bond were to pass. But focus in on one of the first things that we've got is the pavement management program. We've created a new webpage. It kind of, we get a lot of calls from staff, both in engineering and in public works. A lot of people talking about, when's my street going to be resurfaced, or why is this block of a street being resurfaced while the next block is not? A lot of good questions, and a lot of people don't understand the reasons for what we're doing and how the budget and pavement scores are allocating and how we come up with our street lists. So what we've done is we've tried to provide sort of a guide to take, take them, allow them, give them a path to a webpage that they can read and understand this information, and kind of provide a brief overview of everything that we're doing and how we go through and prioritize our projects. We've also now got links so that if people do have issues with, whether it be a town street or DOT street, that they can quickly get to a link that'll allow them, for example, to submit a ticket for a DOT street. Of course, I've got to update that, that web link, or maybe it's just not working here, but it will take you over to the DOT, well, there it goes, just took a second, take you over to the DOT, and then you can submit, submit a ticket for whether it be a pothole or a drainage ditch blockage, or something along those lines. And then we've got the same thing for town streets, you can submit a ticket to Garner Info, or it can provide information on how to get in contact with public works for what they're working on. And then the rest of this page is kind of dedicated to our pavement management system. So of course, in pavement management, where our two main programs are the annual resurfacing program, which is headed by engineering, and then the annual preservation contract, which is headed by public works. And so what we've done is to try to provide a clear overview of the differences between those programs, how the pavement condition scores, what we call the PCI scores, pavement condition index, how those are, we routinely get those condition scores done every three to four years, and then we use those condition scores to determine which streets are going to be prioritized for maintenance. So we kind of walk them through this, and then we also provide them links to the department that handles each program. And then we also provide an outline of all the tools in the toolbox. So not only are we doing resurfacing, we are also doing things such as crack sealing or asphalt patching, asphalt rejuvenators, micro-surfacing. And we kind of explain and provide some photos and explanation as to when and where you would see these types of tools being done. In many cases, people will see somebody out in the field doing what's a micro-surfacing project and assume it's a resurfacing project. And obviously, there's, they're actually two completely different tools, they do not look the same when they're completed, and so sometimes expectations may not be met because they don't realize that this is not a full paving job. So we're hoping that this information, and this is live already, can help them to get that information and better understand some of the calls that we get and our explanations on this. But what we'd like to do is to take it one step further, so one of the things that we've recently developed is a tool, an interactive map, that will allow them to pull open, let me pull it up. Right now, this is usable by staff, but it hasn't been rolled out, public facing yet. But there could be a link on our map or on that webpage that allows you to click on it and brings open this type of interactive GIS map. And so when you open this up, it kind of shows the corporate boundary, and you see kind of a color coding mix of different streets. So you zoom in a little bit, you kind of see that these are basically showing sort of on a, based on PCI scores, I know it's a little hard to read on the big screen, but going from green to red, and the green streets are going to be your streets that are either most recently resurfaced or in very good shape from a pavement management standpoint. And then you're, as you move down into yellow, then into orange, then into red, you get to the streets that are in worse shape and that are probably no longer, when you get into, say, orange and red, then you're probably outside of the annual preservation tools, and you're in a, in a position where the street needs to be resurfaced. And so just for an example, looking in Eagle Ridge for one, for example, you can kind of see how, based on how the development was originally constructed in phases, and over time, certain areas of the subdivision are in more need of resurfacing than the others. So somebody can easily come in here, and you can see that, say, Waterville Street, which is one that I believe had recent maintenance, at least back in here, I believe it did. So right there, they could click on that street, and it brings up a pop-up menu. First off, it tells you that's a town of Garner maintained street, so you do know it's a town maintained street. It also gives you the beginning and end description of that block, this is, these pavement condition scores, as you know, are block to block, the width of the street, the length of the street, and then your PCI score. So in this case, this one's at an 81. So anything in that range would probably be more acclimated to getting, say, asphalt rejuvenation or crack sealing, but not to the point of needing to be milled and repaved. But you also can scroll down, and you can see actually when the last, last maintenance type was done, and when that date of that occurred. So in this case, that section was macro-surfaced back in 2020. As you move around, you also can see, if you see in the, in the background, streets that are pink, those are NC DOT streets, not town maintained streets. So there's a legend on here that anybody can look at, there's also blue streets that are private streets. So we're actively going to be updating this on an annual basis, along with our Powell Bill map updates each year. And so we're sort of covering both on the interactive map, as well as what we do through the state for our funding through Powell Bill, but it allows us to basically put a utility out there that people can better understand what they're seeing within the neighborhoods that they live in, and how not only does streets vary across the town with 113 miles of streets that we're maintaining, but they actually can be much different even within the same neighborhood. And so I think it's a lot easier to explain something like that when people can see a map such as this, versus talking to somebody on the telephone that's pulling a block out of a long list of streets and telling them, "Well, your pavement condition score is 70," but they don't really know what that means. So we would like to get councils, yeah, go ahead.
So, you know, average layman or person looking at this might ask the question, we're looking here, what would be your explanation? You've got green streets all around in this area here, but you've got the one red, red street.
Correct.
What, is there a reasonable explanation why that particular street seems to be?
That's right. This actually, it just happened to be, zoom in, this is where I used to live when I was in Garner. So this is in Southview subdivision off of NC 50. Most of Chapworth Road in green and some of these other streets in green, they were resurfaced within the last five years, so that is why they are noted in red, I mean green. Southerby Drive is actually on our potential list for 2022. So that kind of shows you, and we've got the same thing across the street here, Foley Drive was just resurfaced last year, about a year and a half ago, along with Steelwood, and we're going to be doing about four streets, Stapleton Drive, Perdito, and this little cul-de-sac here in the next contract. So yes, that there's, it's a clear reason, reason to the madness, but it, yeah.
Thank you.
Great map, I like, it's just good.
I think it will be helpful. We just want to make sure, we don't want to put something out there that may generate more questions, or, by no means having people calling council for more questions related to seeing the tool, but we feel that a lot of this is very easy to understand. to seeing the tool, but we feel that a lot of this is very easy to understand, it's easy for town staff to explain to, and I think it's more transparent and easier to communicate with the typical homeowner when you have something like this to show them.
So do I understand, as a result of your presentation, we are going to be asked to, what is it, to approve the pavement management system, excuse me, consider allowing GIS tools to be added to engineering website for public use?
Yes. Basically, whether you would, we are already going to use this internally, but we would want you all to consider rolling it out in public facing so that it could be a link on our website that they could go in and look at this and pull open and click on streets and see this information firsthand in real time. And we would update, like I said, we would update this about every quarter or about each year with the resurfacing as well as the rejuvenation preservation work as well.
Okay. But I guess before we do that, we can go to the circuit and see if questions, Phil, I'll start with you.
Looks good. I think it's a great tool. I think we should roll it out for the public too.
I heard Mr. Johnson asked my question in reference to how often to be updated. I heard quarterly.
For this tool, it would probably be annually because we resurface and do preservation once a year. So we are updating the PCI scores through a survey every three to four years, but so we would get new PCI scores from the consultant that does that for us every few years. And then in between those other years where we're not getting the survey, we'll be manually updating this to track the maintenance activities that do take place. And then for ones that where we've resurfaced the street that may be shown as like a 40 or 50 today, we change it to 100, which represents a brand-new street. So we would kind of do those type of periodic updates once a year.
Anything?
No, I do like the interactive map. I do, and I had no trouble with putting it up for the public to look at, just might raise more questions than answers. I mean, I look at, you know, I've always wondered, sometimes when we do blocks, blocks on the street. I mean, you look here at Park Avenue and there's obviously the low scores, part of Park Avenue needs to be done. And my parents lived in Edgbrook and back up them, and years and years ago, this is many years ago, someone who lived behind there used to always say, how come they're just doing Half Park Avenue? And I used to ask because I always thought, why don't you start at one end of the street and do the other? But anyway, I mean, I can see where we've done things, but I mean, somebody can come out and say, well, yes, I'm assuming the stuff in the red is what is going to be considered next year's paving or rejuvenation.
Most of the red are covered in the next contract.
Okay. All right. And what, from what color on the score, scale here, I'm sorry, goes, if the red is usually for resurfacing, what is the rejuvenation projects, what are they, under orange and yellow or?
I think most of the rejuvenation and crack sealing probably typically occurs between the 80 to 100, probably 80 to 90. And then when you get down below 80, then they start looking at the micro-surfacing. And then the next tool that we typically use is the resurfacing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We hope to get to a point after doing this preservation work for several years, like we've now done two full years worth of preservation work, we're hoping to see we get to a point where we can resurface our streets when they're down, when they're in the 60s. But right now, we still have some streets that are in the upper 30s, low 40s, not a lot, but a few. But each year, we seem to be catching up since we started doing the preservation work. And a lot of those streets that are in the 70, 80 range, they're getting bumped up with those preservation tools so that they'll last longer. So we're hoping a few more years of what we've been doing, it's going to pay dividends.
Well, converting to this program three, four, five years ago and getting an annual update, everything's online with y'all, looking at options other than what we were doing, which is mainly resurfacing, which is so expensive per foot, and the rejuvenation and the micro-surfacing and so forth, which you can extend the life of the road for, you can tell us however, how many years it may be. And that was why we had to do it, because it was just got too costly to, you just can't repave every street.
That's right.
It's not cost effective.
It's probably about $15 to $20 per square yard to repave where you can do the rejuvenator, rejuvenators or micro-surfacing for $4, $5 a square yard. So yeah, they're usually hitting, we usually do about two and a half to three and a half miles of streets and paving where they're probably doing more along the lines of 15 to 20 miles per year. So when you only have 113 miles, I mean, that's a lot of miles, but when you're able to hit 10% of your streets per year, that's doing good.
Better. Because when we were talking about this, we were just at 100 miles, 101, 102, so we've added some new subdivisions. So yeah, we were not hitting at 10%. We were at 3% and 4% and we needed to get higher. Thank you.
Exactly.
Yeah. Chris, I really like these maps. I think that they communicate transparency and the more the citizens believe they can see and find on their own that nothing's being hidden from them, the more understanding they're going to be and the more cooperative in the long run and working as a team. So thank you. I'm glad to see this going live.
Okay. Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, I agree. And I think, you know, you have all the underlying data feeding into this. I think it'd be helpful to present it in a chart format so you could see by category how many miles of road we have in those categories and then sort of targets for where we want to go. So as we were saying, as we can move things out of the red and orange and up, the cost also decreases. So each of those categories sort of has a cost per foot or mile for maintenance or improvement, and as you go down lower, it's more expensive. So it starts to tell that story, like you already know, the more you can push them higher, the cheaper it actually is to do. And so it helps us, I think, when we get into next year's budget to say, let's take a chunk and knock these out so that they can get up to this 9100 and kind of get them higher up in this maintenance program and get rid of some of the really terrible streets that, you know. So I think just, you've got the data, it'd be kind of cool to see it presented in a different way so we can see how many.
Yes, that's exactly right. And I think that'll be a good time when we get the next survey. I don't think we're doing it this year, but we'd be doing it next year. That'll be a good time for us to be able to compare. I think, if I can recall, I think our average PCI score across town was in the low 70s when we did it last time. So we'll be very, really look forward to seeing if that number's bumped.
Okay. Let's see, Phil, did I already get you?
Good.
Yeah. I was just thinking, you know, as people walk their neighborhoods, perhaps something like this, this schematic might become a topic of friendly neighborhood discussion. One neighbor might say, well, I live on a green street. Another might say, well, I live on a red street. So we're waiting to get our, at any rate, we'll see what happens. But yeah, I think it's very transparent, as already been said, and it's a good tool that the average person can use, hopefully.
Mr. Perry, let me say this, as someone who drives through a lot of towns all over eastern North Carolina, our streets are in much better shape than some towns. My fact, I drive through towns, and I would think this street would never, ever be in the Town of Garner in this condition. I mean, I've gone through streets where there's a public street and the potholes or, and I'm not talking about just the winter time, I'm talking about spring, summer, that there's nothing in their plans to make the improvements in it. So we are fortunate. I think getting this program is going to help us a lot. Continue to help.
I'm thinking we may need a motion to approve the GIS tools.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, properly made. Okay. Council's in favor of that? Would you vote aye?
Aye.
And there is no opposition? So full speed ahead, Chris.
I do have a question. Was it just this tool or also the capital?
Yeah, one more tool to show you.
Okay.
Yeah. No, that's okay. It was kind of a two-part thing, so.
And also don't think we were going to ask for any particular action on it because we felt like it was just going to go as part of information. We just really wanted council to weigh in on the one that you just weighed in on because of the topic.
Next time, don't get too far here.
Oh, no, you're just fine splitting it up. So back to the capital improvement program. So right now, we do have, oops, I'm sorry, I hit the wrong link. We've got street and sidewalk projects where we are in the process of, we have not really done a major upgrade to our engineering website in the past two years. So this is our first time to refresh and try to add to it. And what we've tried to do is go through and really start taking leaps on getting project pages for every project that we have onto there with its own link, where we can guide citizens to get the information, the latest plans, where you're at in the process, whether there's been a public meeting or so forth. So we've got a street and sidewalk list. Some of these don't have links yet. Some of them are actually projects that are already completed, so they'd be coming off the list at some point soon. But we've also gone ahead and added the NC DOT, a link that takes them right to the NC DOT STIP map, as well as some of the larger area projects that DOT is working on. Just another way to, a lot of times, people don't know where to find the information, but if they come to our webpage, we'll try to get them there, even if it's elsewhere. So we've also got stormwater projects on here. We've only got really two right now, one being the Parkwood Drive project, which is just now getting underway, but you drop that, you get to, the webpage kind of shows you what's going on, tells you the funding source, the work scope, project budget, who the contractor is in this case, who the design engineer is, and then sort of a brief schedule. So these are types of pages that as soon as we get, we've got a capital, a project manager position that's going to be opening soon, we get that person on, we will be using those capital project managers to keep these updated as often as they can and as the needs change throughout the project, whether it be through design, advertisement, or through construction. And then we've got a few facility projects, although we don't have anything right now. You've got the Garner Rec site and the Town Hall Police Station. And so then we also have the Capital Projects Report, which you're very familiar with, that's out there for a link. But what we're wanting to do is take this another step. And the other tool that we've created is a similar tool in GIS. And we would have another, this would be embedded in that project page, and it's sort of an interactive map version of that project status page that we provide you each quarter. So I know this is a lot of information, but what we've got on here is not just town projects, we've got Town of Garner projects, NC DOT projects, and Raleigh Water projects. So it doesn't matter where you're at, you can be getting, seeing construction zones all over the place and not really know who it is. So as you zoom in to there, we do have a legend of color-coded legend for Garner's projects. We've got Town of Garner street projects in red, sidewalk projects in yellow, stormwater in blue, and then we've actually got a couple, one or two lighting projects that we're working on along Highway 70. Then we've also got, I also already threw in here what we expect to be the 2022 resurfacing contract in purple, just kind of color-coded that differently just so people, it would stand out. Raleigh Water, you've got in the pink. And then DOT, they've got several, these are all links to GIS information that's real time. So as DOT updates their links, it automatically updates on ours. But they've got all of their repaving for 2021, 2022, 2023, and 2024. So as you zoom around, I like, in here, Spring Drive is one of the next up and coming DOT resurfacing projects. If you go in here and click on Spring Drive, then it tells you that's an NC DOT resurfacing project, the estimated costs and what they're planning to do, mill and fill inch and a half and inch and a half of S9.5B. If you click on a pink, there's a Raleigh Water sewer and AC water line replacement project that's being done. There's minimal information, but at least gives you just enough to know that, hey, this is not a Garner project, this is a Raleigh Water project. But if you do click on a Town of Garner project per se, like we'll pick Lake Drive, which we know is in there, and this one actually brings up two because Raleigh Water's doing a water line project as part of that. So there's a Raleigh Water project, but if you click, then you see Town of Garner Capital Project, Lake Drive Widening, the project phase is it's in land acquisition, funding source, transportation bond, project budget, the projected completion date, the project type, which is a street project, the owner's at Town of Garner. And then we kind of follow DOT's lead in that you've got design year 2020, right-of-way year 2021, construction year 2022, and then it's even got a webpage link. You click that and it takes you right over there to get information for Lake Drive. And so it's just another way for people to get guided to where they need to be based on what projects they're looking at. We've even got a few projects that have not really started, they're in scoping position. So this is the upcoming West Garner Road sidewalk project that's going to be done between Vandoor West subdivision and Weston Street that was sent out, one of the four projects, I think we threw out for RFQ a few months back. So the project phase is shown as project scoping. It's currently unfunded for construction, but we've already got it in there with some projected dates and we, of course, we would update this along with our project, quarterly capital projects updates. And so just another way for people to get the information, but rather than using that large, small print table that I provide you each quarter, it gives them something they can look at on the website when they feel like it, and it can make a little bit easier to understand some of the information. And like I said, this has got a lot of projects in here that are not ours. You click on STIP project, that's the U-5302 project on 401, and get information on where that project stands. So long as DOT has updated their GIS, this will be matching up with whatever they've put in there. So there's not one really, a lot of other, but there's one thing I do want to mention, you can get in here, you can do measurements. So people may want to do a measurement of a project, you can do that. And the other tool I gave, I showed you earlier, has the same stuff. You can print a map, you can share it by, if you wanted to send it to a relative or whatever, get information. So there's just a lot of little things you can do here to make it more handy and helpful for the user.
So you're saying the bold pink line there on Highway 70 is the?
The pink?
Phase of, yes, the phase of the street lighting to be done on Highway 70.
Yep. So that one's US 70 street lighting, it's in design, project budget with a projected completion date of next year. Of course, all that's dependent on funding, but yes.
To show how, either how slow or how long something takes. The first board retreat I went to in 1994, I brought up lighting Highway 70, and that was from two of our planning commission members who spoke with me about that. And we started, I mean, I was the only one who was in favor of it, and slowly we finally got a majority to do it. And so the street lights that were on Highway 70 finally appeared in 2001. Now, we're 20 years later and we're still working on lighting Highway 70, but anyway. Because when Timber Drive was built, the lights were, you know, it was already constructed that way. And the Timber Drive East also had it, but.
We hope to green new some costs on that project very soon.
It's a long, slow process. But anyway, I digress. It's just, it'd be nice to have the road completed because after we did Highway 70, both Clayton and Fuquay lit up their sections of Highway 70, and they didn't phase it like we did or miss spots. They did it from start to finish. Fuquay was 401 and Clayton 70. So it'd be nice to see that complete one day. It's a major corridor.
Okay. Anything else on council?
Nothing.
Okay. Phil?
Yeah, we didn't need any motion on that one, I just received his information. So we're going to roll that out on the website as well, make it more available. It's ready to go.
Next time my grandson visits me from Colorado, I'll put him on this thing and let him play around with it, show me some of the things that I should know myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
How about your grandson?
He's in the fifth grade now, I believe.
So here, so what you're saying is you can let your grandson show you how to use it?
Well, if I get stymied myself, let's just say it that way.
I'll make sure.
Okay. Item number three, Mr. Hodges Fire Station schematic design, and I believe our fire chief is here as well, or he was. Yeah, there he is. So you're up, sure. So you're up, sir.
Member, mayor and members of council, wanted to bring you an update on the McCullar, or the fire station five schematic designs. Chief Poole is here tonight, as was mentioned by the mayor. Also, Tommy Mormon, who is project manager and real estate specialist for Wake County facilities, design and construction, is also here. He's project manager on this project, we've been working with him on design, so he's here for any questions that we have tonight, and we thank him for being here. And I apologize, this did not open in the format that we thought it was going to open in, so I'm going to scroll through this. These are slides that were presented to Wake County Commissioners very recently, they have reviewed and approved the schematic design for the fire station. I think council is very familiar with this project, as we've been talking about it for our bond referendum, I think you're aware of the location, off of Caddy Road, of where we are citing the fire station. There's some background here that, again, I think you're probably very well aware of, that we do have land control off of Caddy Road, we've been partnering with the county to look for design, look at design of this project for several years now. Again, the site is here, the schematic design layout is here, and I'm going to attempt to blow this up, but again, we did not get the view that I expected that we had up earlier with this. There we go. So as you come down Caddy Road, this is heading, this is heading, I guess that would be east on Caddy Road, the station will be on your right, you'll see the bays here and the building here, stormwater device here on the end. We do have our floor plan. Zoom in some here. The lighter green space is Garner Fire, the blue is Wake EMS, and we did ask to add a touchdown space for Garner Police, so over on the left here, there is an office space that would accommodate three people at a time, a break room as well as a restroom with an exterior entrance. So we did work that in to this design. Again, you see blue for Wake EMS, all the green for Fire. We've talked with you before about adding this additional bay. At the time we started this project, and I think I skipped by this on one of Tommy's slides, Wake, sorry, Fuquay Arena was in the initial study phase with this, they have recently made a decision to not move forward with this project. So in addition to the shared spaces here, that's a little more over to the side there, in addition to the shared spaces here, there is a future expansion opportunity that was originally going to be planned as the Fuquay sleeping quarters. We have asked Wake County to keep that dotted line in for now. The thought is that if we can afford to build the expansion space, whether it is, as they refer to it, a cold dark shell or a warm lit shell, then we would go ahead and build that space now. We would probably never be able to expand this for the same kind of pricing we can now, so if the budget works out that we could, we would go ahead and shell this in. This could be future expansion for Fire, although I don't believe the chief expects to need it in the foreseeable future, but there could be a day that we needed more police presence space than we have drawn in here, or any other number of uses that we might try to use for this. So, that is in here at a minimum cold dark shell price for now, and we can discuss it as we get closer to construction about what level we want to finish that. Before I move on, let me just pause on this, just to see if there's any questions about the layout, or about the space that we've included here.
Phil, go ahead.
Yes, I'm glad you're thinking outside the box. Well said, Ma, let's do it right the first time, and because with all the growth in that area, we've been overdue at fire station, and EMS is going to be certainly a good part of that. And now with the police out there with that growth, it's like some other areas in our ETJ, the condominiums, the homes, we know what's coming, some things we've already approved, and to allow that for the police, there's no doubt in my mind it's going to be used, Chief, I can tell you that, so, so, you know, other than the shell, if we, while we're looking at it, if we need to, go ahead, because I think the police is going to need more than that one little section there with all the growth out there, we're going to see a lot happening out there. So, I'm glad, at least we're building the shell, but if we go a little bit farther, it personally wouldn't upset me, I'd like to see that happen, because they're going to use it, it's coming.
And a point of clarification, this is not planned currently to have staff, staff there all the time, and I don't want to speak for interim Chief Smith, but I think that right now, because police has not moved to a model in which they are distributing their staff out to work at remote locations, this at least does provide touchdown space, if we build out the expansions, if we have the expansion space there, and they choose to change their model and how they're going to serve the entire area, then we've got space to grow to.
And you're correct, I think it's going to happen, and I was saying about, running out at Bethel Church Road and all that, and that development, all that, that area near the new senior high, the growth that's going on out there, I can see a police presence out that way, probably sooner than later, who knows where the fire is going to come in with that also. We're just growing, and this is a great opportunity, I'm glad we're seasoned and thinking outside the box, because this is going to be a great facility, and it's well-needed, we're just holding our breath, there's no apartment fire out there at 5:00 on a Friday afternoon. If it is, we're all in trouble. But thanks for what you're doing.
Anybody else comment, question, down here? None? Greg?
And if Chief Poole has anything he wants to add, I'd welcome him to come up to do that. I will say that, that he's been very involved in the detailed work of this, you know, throughout all the work sessions we've had on this, so had a great opportunity to weigh in on where things are located, moving things around, and Wake County team has been extremely accommodating and helping us move things around to get the kind of program that we feel like we need.
Will this, will this become, I was just thinking of the stations we have, this one is as large as any we have, isn't it? With the combined space, well, I'm just talking about the full layout of the building and so forth.
Comparison, Chief, you can probably answer, this would be larger or comparable to?
Yeah, it would be the largest facility we have. Most of our stations are three-bay stations. Station one is a four-bay, it's a dual-company station, so base-base-wise, this would be as large as what we have. Total square footage is probably the largest fire station. I do agree with Mr. Hodges, the growth in need, so as reliability, as your demand increases, the need for multi-company stations sometimes arises, and so by building the station with four bays and potential flex space, you could add another dormitory, training room, PD space, so not really knowing the total amount of growth in that area, I think you're getting ahead of the, ahead of the game by four bays and adding that additional space. It's also, you know, our, our stations, we've got a station that was built in 1970, '76, and 2010, and so technology has changed, cancer prevention is very big in our career now, and so this building identifies the need to remove the turnout gear from our bay and living areas, it's got adequate workout space, it's got a decontamination room, so it is certainly well-fit for, for a new-age fire station, I'll say that.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. I share Councilmember Matthews' enthusiasm and excitement for this, and it'll be a nice new facility when we get it built, sure enough.
I think council has seen at least one of these renderings that the county provided us early, so we could have it in our bond materials, this being the one we've been using. But some renderings of the outside of the building, the end of the building, this little area here is that expansion space that's drawn in on the back. You see there's a change of grade here, this would be the entrance for the police touchdown space on the end of the building. Aerial view here to give you better perspective, so this is one of the stormwater management ponds with, as a part of the McCullar subdivision, so if you've been down Caddy Road and looked over, you probably can help that be your orientation, and then this being the stormwater device for the fire station project. This gives you a little more details about some of the choices that are being made in design, making this as environmentally friendly and environmentally conscious for operations as possible. We are working with the county on cost estimates now, as everybody's been aware, cost of building materials had gone pretty high during COVID. We are seeing some relief from that now, I confirmed that with Mr. Mormon earlier tonight, that they are seeing some of that go down, gotten some better prices back in recently on their EMS station that they, the council approved to build here in Garner recently, so that's good to see some numbers coming back to more stabilized levels. Current estimate for building this would be between 8.2 and 8.8 million, and when you divide that out, Garner, the Garner portion, including, we're saying Fire, but Fire as well as the PD space that we have to include, we would be sharing at about 69% of that, EMS would be at about 31%, so currently our range would be 5.7 to 6.1, and these numbers have been escalated out for two years past current construction cost.
We have another half million dollars, that's $6 million.
Yep. And that does leave us a little bit of wiggle room, that if we want to go deeper than a cold dark shell for the expansion, there's some potential that we could cover all of that with a 6.5, and obviously there's other funding sources that could be used if there's a little bit of a difference as well. The structure for this would be that the Town of Garner would be the owner of the land, the fire station, we would be funding our portion of the fire station, and then operator of the fire station, Wake County, would be the owner of the building, with, as you see a note there, with a ground lease from Garner for the land, and with EMS being a funding partner, operator of the building and facility services from Wake County maintaining the facility for us. And then the proposed schedule would put us bidding and contracting in the spring of '22, construction in the late summer, early fall of '22, completing in the fall of '23, and then occupying it close to the end of '23. And this, again, was slides for the county commissioners, so they were actually being asked to approve this schematic. We have not scheduled any particular action on council's part, but if there is any particular comments you'd like to take, or any recommended action that the manager, Ms. Jones, would prefer to have, I'd be happy to entertain that now or bring that back to a future meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hodges, a good presentation. Any other observations, suggestions, comments?
A curious question. This, right there, John, at the view of the building, I drive back through Wendell Falls Parkway with my work, and this looks a lot like the Wendell Falls Parkway station, it's very similar, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thought so. I drove back there after I, I saw this is a schematic, I went by there, I said, it looks just like that, so, good, thanks.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And we had a lot of conversation about participation and ownership, and I'm glad we have full control in partnership with Wake County. I would be remiss to not express disappointment in Fuquay's lack of any type of participation, considering they are a significant beneficiary of this station, so I just want to be on the record for that.
Okay. Anything else?
I just have a comment, and this is something that's been sorely needed for a long time, and it's finally here. I know that we already know this, but it bears repeating, that we have the large, other than Raleigh and I believe Cary, Chief Poole, we have the largest service area in Wake County. We cover so much more territory, our fire department and EMS cover so much more territory than people actually process. It's a huge, huge responsibility, and this fire station, it's way overdue, we're just really glad to see it here finally.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Sir.
If you have anything else.
I think it's important, as Chief Poole mentioned also, he mentioned, I believe Station one was built in '70, and I'm assuming Station two was '76?
Yes, sir.
And when there's Station two is small and older, and, I mean, that's, I don't know, that's the next one that's in line, it's got to be, and maybe relocated with the addition of 540, but we know a new Station two is going to have to be built sometime in the future.
Yeah, we had a discussion at your town retreat that was at the Rand Brown House several years ago, where we identified that station was never truly designed to house some people permanently, and at some point, the relocation or redesign of that fire station will be needed. So, after this project's completed, your, your next fire, long-term capital need for the fire department would be the relocation or redesign of Station two.
And probably 540's changing a whole lot, it's like with this one, right down the road at Wake Tech, there's the 540, and same way over there on Highway 50.
Yes.
And we know what it is when, all you guys have to deal with things out on 540, and that proximity is very important, not to mention response time.
Okay.
And thank you again to Tommy Mormon for being here tonight, and for all their partnership with his team working on this project.
If you don't mind, John, the only thing I will say is Tommy and Mark Forstieri, Mark was involved in our Station four project, and when I became the chief, that was, the project was underway, and I learned a lot from Mark about project management, he ran a tight ship, and Tommy has done the same with this project, so I'd like to thank them for what they've done for this as well.
Very good, thank you. Any comments you care to make?
Be happy to, Mayor Marshburn. My name's Tommy Mormon, my work address is 336 South Pettple Street in Raleigh. I just want to thank the Town of Garner for their partnership, particularly the town manager, Rodney Dickerson, and his leadership, assistant manager, John Hodges, and his participation and leadership, and Chief Matt Poole and his guidance and leadership in the process. It's been a wonderful partnership, we're looking forward to getting the project started. We appreciate your support, and we know that the impact in the community will be tremendous. We were talking about this with our team today at Wake County, and every time we look at the aerial, around 1010, 401, the McCullars area, it's changing. We've got multifamily development, single-family development, commercial development, and so we want to give accolades to the town for having the foresight to purchase the property, so that we could get this program in place. So thank you so much for that, thank you for your partnership, and if I can answer any questions on behalf of the county, I'll be glad to do that.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your kind comments. I don't think there are any, Rodney, is it fair to say, John, part of this, in terms of the location of the Caddy Road, we work out a cooperative agreement with GDC for land swap?
Correct, that's correct, for a land swap, that we plan to do in sometime in the near future, I guess.
Yeah.
Where it'll turn that property over to the town
Right.
For this project.
Okay, I thought that was in the mix as well, thank you. And thank you, sir, for good comments. Okay, let's see, John, are you up?
If you don't mind, can I veer from the agenda for just a moment?
Sure, go right ahead.
And I'll tell you, I didn't pay Tommy to say those good things about me, although he's one of my former teammates, so, yeah, he is. But
Where? Where was he a teammate?
You know. While Chief Poole is here, I was going to mention the festivities they have going on this weekend, but if he's going to be here for a little while, I didn't know if he would stay in the whole meeting, if you want to talk about your
You want me to do it now, or?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do it now.
Yeah, I thought maybe he was leaving, so I just wanted him to
My shameless plug, thank you, Mr. Matthews.
We'll deviate for the fire chief and a Fireman's Day, how's that?
Yeah, really quick, thank you for the opportunity. So our annual Fireman's Day Festival is on for this weekend, the weather looks beautiful, I looked at it just before I came here, so it is a normal day for us. We've altered some things, we've cut our vendor booths down from 75 to 50 to give a little more space, but we, we're trying to focus more on fire prevention education than we ever have with our new captive community risk reduction position, but we've got the state fire marshal, insurance commissioner coming in to do a small program on sprinkler systems, and they've got a live-fire demonstration. All of the information for that day is located on our website at garnerfire.com. It's the list of events and activities, the parade, all the food, and all those things are on there, so please remember Saturday to come out to our annual Fireman's Day Festival. You can park at First Baptist Church, and there is free transportation rides from that parking lot to the fire station, so you can park and ride, and it runs back and forth all day long.
You wanted to mention what you might call a starting time, sometime that morning?
Yeah, so around 10:00, it kicks off, the parade is at 2:00, I believe, and then right after that, we have a band, The Antique Outlaws, is playing directly after the parade, and live burn demonstration after the parade, games for the kids, there's a combat challenge, those things generally start up around lunchtime. But garnerfire.com has the hourly event schedule located on the website.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir, thank you for allowing me that.
Okay, yes, sir.
Mr. Matthews?
Mr. Matthews.
Since we, I'm sorry I run my mouth too much tonight, but since, introduce, we've got a new interim chief of the police department, it'd be nice, can we take a minute, let her, introduce her to
Well, we could do it now, or we could do it Right after this presentation, I mean, I guess it's okay to get things out of order just a little bit, but yeah, you want to introduce her?
Since we kind of broke into mode already, yeah, I was going to do this at some point, but
You sure did, Chief.
We'll introduce formerly Captain Laurie Smith, but now, starting October the 1st, she will serve as the interim chief of police for the Town of Garner Police Department.
Yes, sir, thank you guys very much for the opportunity.
She grew up in Garner, knows a lot about Garner, has served various roles within the police the police department, and is going to serve us well, and glad to have her.
I'm a lifelong Garner resident, been here my entire life, either worked here or lived and, lived and in or worked in this community, and have been a, and am a twenty-four-year veteran of the police department, so.
Let me just say, congratulations to you, and we look forward to your continued good service in your new interim capacity there. Look forward to working with you, sure enough, and I'm sure that would be true with the council as well. Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll go back to our regular agenda, and we recognize Mr. Dickerson for the next presentation.
All right. Mayor, town council staff and I are going to tag team on a presentation on the American Rescue Plan, and just a funding update, there's been some information put out, but all of the, as we're going to tell you and probably keep reiterating, the guidelines have not been finalized, so we're going to tell you, based on the information we have and some of the seminars and other resources that we have that we've listened to, and what we've seen maybe some other local governments do, and we're just going to give you some background information, and then we'll give you some things that might be more specific to Garner as possibilities, but just want to kind of give you an update. We expected that the guidelines were going to be finalized the middle of this month, September, but they haven't been, so we're still awaiting on those final guidelines, but we'll do the best to giving you some updated information. All right, so, the American Rescue Plan, there's, that's the funding for local governments. There are multiple funding buckets, three different buckets, so we don't want to get those confused. They all have different purposes, different, may have different regulations, so we need to distinguish those from the ARP. They'll offer different opportunities and qualification, and resources will vary between those, so we have the local government funds, what we know we're going to get, and we, the town has gotten its first allotment of that. It's referred to as a non-entitlement units funding, and we are a non-entitlement unit. Our funds will pass through the state, and we're going to get that in two tranches. Like I said, we already got five million in the first one, and we expect to get the next one about a year from now. We're waiting final treasury guidance on what is allowed, and even though there's going to be some guidance coming from the treasury about what is allowed, some of that's still going to be restricted, potentially restricted by what our state, individual state law allows. So some states might be able to do some things that here in North Carolina are not allowed, so we'll have to keep an eye on that. So that's why we're looking at all different kind of resources to get, to verify some of this information, and what the money can be used for. The state of North Carolina and other states are also getting money, they're going to be using that for state fiscal relief, so where revenues came up short due to, you know, the COVID crisis and pandemic, and also to use it for critical capital projects. They could use some funds, create grants and funding opportunities that we may qualify for, so we're waiting to see how that comes out, and some of these funds, they may be used in the upcoming budget, when that budget gets approved. So there's not a lot of guidance out on how those state funds are going to be used, and how much of that might get tripled down to local government entities. There's also federal funding. A lot of, a lot of the federal agencies are receiving American Rescue Plan funds in addition to the regular funds they receive, and some of those are going to create funding and grant opportunities that we may or may not qualify for, but we are keeping an eye on those, and we are monitoring those, staff is monitoring it, so that if there are some opportunities where we can leverage some of our funds and do more with it, we'll hopefully try to take advantage of some of those, and some are adding to existing programs. So just keep in mind, there's three different layers to this funding, not the ARP funding, but the total funding. So what's going to determine what's allowable expenditure, there's a federal law, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund, and then there's US Treasury regulations, so they're still, like I said, going through the guidelines and finalizing those, so we're trying to look at all of those different interpretations of all those different regulations. Like I said, the ARP, American Rescue Plan is going to have allowable expenditures, but there could be some state law that preempts us from using it for certain things, so what we're going to be looking at is whether two overlap, and that's what this illustrates. We must follow the most restrictive rule. Example, you know, some states might be able to use it for certain economic development reasons, but in North Carolina, there are certain things we can't use economic development monies for, just as an example, so we have to look at whatever the restrictions are for our state. The checklist for the ARRP, ARP is identify the potential program or project, see if there's state authority to do that, match it up with the ARP category, and then we would look for a specific guidance for that category or that project from the US Treasury. If there's no guidance, then we would just use the framework set by the US Treasury. And then there's specific reporting requirements, so some things, like we'll go into later, are going to require some justification of how COVID affected it, for example. So we'll have to do some reporting there, we'll have to, you know, if it was a loss of revenue, we'd have to report like how much lost revenue we had during the pandemic. We have to follow contracting requirements, so we have those in place now, so it doesn't preempt us from following some of our bidding laws and some of those state laws. There's a lot of entities that are, you know, keeping an eye on this and trying to decipher what may happen, or decipher some of the rules that are in place but could still change, like the School of Government has a, has a call that we get on, the League, the Association of County Commissioners, Triangle J, Department of Environmental Quality, et cetera, et cetera, and then also, we'll use our attorney as a resource. She's actually chiming into some of those meetings also, just to make sure that some of the things they're talking about are legal for our, our government and our, that we have authority to do some of these things.
It's like playing the lottery, isn't it? I mean, they get nine things listed here, and each one's got a subcategory. It's like we're doing pick three, pick five, pick four, this, that, and the other. New scratch-off ticket, see if it fits in this category.
Yeah, and that's why there's so many cautions about not getting too far ahead of the guidelines, because with them not being finalized, you don't want to be promising things that you can't, you know, follow up on.
Are they giving you any kind of potential timeline with this coming out, that we know something?
We, we were originally told, like I said, the middle of this month, and then that hasn't happened, so we're just, it's kind of a wait and see. And I don't know, we'll have some other staff that might, may have more information on whether there's any other projected dates. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hodges, and he'll go through some of the other specifics, categories, and potential project areas.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. Before we move on, I just wanted to disclaim that many of the slides that you see tonight are slides that we provided council for as information about a month back, and most of these slides come from our colleagues at the School of Government. These are slides that they use to frame a conversation on office hours, as they call them, that they've set up for us to all get on these weekly, or sometimes more frequently calls, to understand and answer questions about this and understand more. So a lot of these are the guideline slides that they have been using. That first slide we showed you that delineated the three buckets of money, that's just more one that we did locally to sort of keep, keep in mind that there's really three different ways that this funding could come to us. And then for tonight's presentation, we've added a few things to these slides where ideas are things that we think are topics that could potentially be things that we'd want to talk about at a local level. Also, wanted to ask, Mr. Beck is here, I was going to ask him if he'd come to the center podium, and also, Mr. Franks is on his line as well, and I wanted to ask both of them tonight to be available for questions, but also chime in just if they had any points they wanted to add to any of this discussion along the way. All of us are, are working on this as a team to try to understand this and go through all the details. So the, the four primary uses that have been identified for the COVID, or for the ARP funds, the first two together in orange there are considered one use, but they're broken down, addressing COVID public health issues and addressing COVID economic impact issues. We'll go through a little more definition on each of these in a moment. The second bucket is replacing lost revenue. Another use is premium pay, and then lastly, infrastructure investments. So for the two orange categories together there, public health and economic impact, you see here the caution from the School of Government is that eligible uses under this category must be in response to the disease itself or the consequences of the economic disruptions resulting from or exacerbated by the public health emergency. So there's uses here that have been talked about, that lots of consultants and others are out saying, hey, come, come let us help you use your money for these things. Some of them may be allowable in North Carolina, some of them may not be, maybe they're allowed in other places, but as Rodney said, and as the last bullet on this slide says, and we'll repeat to you often, we have to always make sure there's state law authority to do something. As you know, in North Carolina, we're only able to do things if enabled by the legislature, and then there are some regulations about things we cannot do. One of them, you'll hear more about tonight, for instance, is broadband. There's some states that are going to be able to use this fund for fully widespread broadband in North Carolina. We do not have that authority to do that. So for this category, some possible uses that we may want to consider as we keep having these discussions here, there's been lots of talk about economic impact assistance. One challenge here is that this is limited under North Carolina law as to who you can give dollars to and for what. Folks have been talking about reimbursing businesses for certain things. North Carolina law further restricts that. There are some cases in which that may be possible, but one of the things that's underlying with this category and a lot of other ones is many of these uses require proof of the impact that you're trying to offset. So in many cases, there'd be lots of documentation or record-keeping needed to try to help understand, was there something caused by the COVID pandemic that your use of funds is trying to offset? There are some a little bit broader parameters for things like job training, and so one idea would be the launch program that Garner recently launched with our partner economic development entities. We don't have a specific need for that, but that is an example of a job training program that might could potentially qualify if there was some few needs of that program, or something that could be added to that program, it may meet the intent of this category. One other need here that has been mentioned is emergency housing repairs. So we've participated in years past with agencies like Rebuilding Together and others. There could potentially be some ways to help utilize funds for that. Again, you sort of have to show that the, the need for those repairs is greater because of COVID, and then there's also some sentiment that some of those agencies are getting inundated with funding that they may already not have the resources to be able to go out and make use of. One question that comes up under this category a lot, and this is an example question and answer from School of Government that I left in for your benefit as an example tonight, may we give ARP funds to nonprofits? When the guidance first came out, that was just sort of a blanket, yes, you can, but School of Government will tell us that no. Our local government, as a local government, we may contract with nonprofits as subrecipients to spend these funds for an ARP eligible purpose that the local government also has the authority to undertake. So if there's something that we have authority to do, but we didn't do it ourselves, we can contract with a nonprofit to do it, but we can't just simply give a grant of dollars to a nonprofit and ask them to go do good things with it. And then one of the things that David and others will remind us of is that no matter what we do, everything has to comply with state law and the federal uniform guidance. And this just gets into more details about how we might partner with a nonprofit, I'm not going to go through every word of this tonight, but should we have a unique situation, and there was a nonprofit in our community that provided a service that's something legally allowable by ARP and something that we're legally allowed to do, we could contract with them, but you see here, there's a few steps in doing that. Another possible use under this initial category would be affordable housing. This is a topic we've talked about over the years as to whether or not we want to participate actively with, passively with, or just keep in mind as we approve development, staff is not trying to steer discussion towards affordable housing, but just recognize that because it's been mentioned over the years, there are ways that we can use ARP dollars to participate in affordable housing. We can do that under two different categories. We can do that in things that require housing authority powers. We do not have a housing authority, so we would likely partner with Wake County to do some of these type things. You, to operate affordable housing or subsidize a private developer or operator of affordable housing, you have to be able to operate under housing authority powers. There are things we can do without housing authority powers, such as constructing affordable housing. We can acquire property for development of housing, and we can acquire property that we convey for later development to use as affordable housing. So there are some ways and some potential ideas around town in which, if the town wanted to embark on some, some projects that were helping to stabilize or provide affordable housing in the community, we've got some ideas, particular things we could talk about when the time's appropriate for that. The second category is replace lost revenue. So this slide is a very busy slide to say that there's a formula by which you have to calculate your loss of revenue. So the, the, the good news is, we really did not have dramatic revenue loss during the pandemic, so the bad news there is that there's not really a lot of ways to use the ARP dollars there, but that's a good net situation. Our lost revenues calculated per the current guidance that out would put our loss estimated to be less than a hundred thousand dollars. Any, any loss that is allowable under whatever calculation becomes final, though, could be used for any general government use. David, is there anything more you want to say about that particular area?
Yeah, just to add a little additional context there, part of the reason the, the lost revenue seems so low is because the formula looks at your revenue entity-wide, so it looks at all your operational revenues together, so you can't just cherry pick, because most of our losses were in interest income, and then also with our parks revenues with facilities being closed. So if we could just look at those two in a vacuum, we would have much more lost revenue than we do, but sales tax far exceeded our expectations and more than made up for those areas, so that's why you see for us, it's a relatively small number. And the formula that they allow could change with the final guidance, and they do give us several opportunities to, several different opportunities to do that calculation over the course of having these funds, but right now, that looks like a pretty, pretty small bucket of money for us that we would be able to use.
Now, the third allowable use is premium pay, so there's a lot of rules about how you can use these dollars for premium pay. However, at the end of the day, all of the premium pay that was originally determined to be needed to get us through the pandemic has been covered by previous CARES Act funding. Did provide a note here that if some, some decision were made to entertain some type of premium pay, Mr. Franks wanted to make sure that we included a note that premium pay that would increase a worker's total pay above a hundred percent, a hundred and fifty percent of the state or county average annual wage, whichever is higher, requires additional justification and may not be eligible. So that is a very worthy to say that most of the folks who we provided premium pay to, police officers, firefighters, and so forth, would cap out with this, and so it's really, again, we don't have a current need for it, but even if we were looking at ways to do it, those, those categories would probably cap out most folks, except some of our most, lowest-paid workers. And then the last category is infrastructure investments, and this is one that a lot of folks are talking about in the community because it was deemed to be sort of a wide-open type of thing that we could do with water, stormwater, wastewater, and broadband are general categories that fall under this. The initial guidance has come out, and fortunately, this is probably the most specific guidance we have under any category right now, is the treasury has said, use the rules and regulations for the EPA's Clean Water State Revolving Fund, or CDWSRF, and Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF. So these are existing EPA programs, tried and true, that they're existing, people use them every year to go after funding. So the rules are pretty cut and dry for what those are. So for, you see some of the examples here for Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, including treatment, transmission, distribution, storage consolidation, and new systems development. We don't own our utility system, so that's another challenge with using some of this for some of those uses, and fortunately for us, we have a very good system that we are a member of and don't have some of the needs that are... have some of the needs that are, are covered specifically or allowed specifically under this. Clean water, similarly, publicly owned treatment facilities for like, for like wastewater treatment and some other uses like that that may or may not apply to us as well. And then a note here, again, that I mentioned earlier, no state law authority for broadband infrastructure. School of Government is guessing that you might see some legislation come out that might change that and undo some things that were done previously to allow more folks, including the state, to use some of the funding they have for broadband. Under this area, we do think there's several things that we might could consider. Under the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, there are potential options for sewer system upgrade, repair, and replacement. We are awaiting final guidance because the initial guidance said that nothing that supports new economic development can be funded, but some of the analysts that are participating in some of our calls are saying that upgrading an existing system, even though it might serve new development, may be able to be qualifying. So we've got a couple of places in town, as your council's aware, that are pinch points within parts of the, the utility system that serves Garner that we might could, could look at making some improvements to pump stations and things that could increase our current capacity. And while they might help offset some future development, they're, they're primarily going to increase the capacity for the users who are already relying on them. One of the things that we feel like we can do as well is stormwater pipe, storage, and treatment systems. So some of our stormwater projects that we've already identified could potentially be covered through this. There's some potential for wetland and repair, repair and protection and restoration. There are a few places in town that while we have not actively pursued some of these, there are some areas that we might want to choose to, to do some work like this, to, to create amenities out of some of these areas or just stabilization. Source water protection and restoration, this is another one that certain activities you can take along streams and other things could potentially qualify. Capital projects planning could potentially qualify. So it could be that as we're designing, continuing to do design on the Yet, Yergin and Meadowbrook Parks, some of the sustainability elements that you heard about at our meeting last week, rainwater collection, the impervious pavement, things like that. There's some potential that doing those plans for those parks and for other public facilities, the planning process might could be covered. And then one that we think we also would, would look into is stormwater management plans. So as the council knows, we've done a study of our 30-inch and larger pipes. We'd like to do one of our smaller pipes. There's some other study I think we could do that the, the engineer has been helping look at areas that, that are upstream of some of our older existing neighborhoods, whether we did it on our own or partnered with existing DOT projects that are on the books to maybe make improvements that go further than a traditional road project might do, but using some of the, the right-of-way available to make some improvements. Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, water mains and service lines to solve safe drinking supply of water. So there's a few areas within our ETJ where either there has been reports of contaminated wells, or there's also spots within our ETJ that have compromised or questionable community water systems. And so given that these areas may become challenges for us to take on in the future, if there's funding that is allowable to be used for those type things, we may want to consider whether or not we invest while we have those dollars, knowing that we would likely be partnering with, with some agency to try to help solve these problems in the future. We included the page or kept the page in that had links to resources, so if anybody's interested in clicking through and looking at some of these resources. Next steps as we see them is follow up on any feedback you give us tonight, things that you heard us say that you say absolutely follow up on, absolutely not. Continue to participate in the School of Government's office hours. Mr. Beck and possibly others are going to participate in a six-day UNC course. This, the basics of the American Rescue Plan Act beginning in October. So it's quite a time commitment that we think important to do. We're still waiting guidance from the state of North Carolina to see how any of the state allocated funds are going to trickle down to municipalities, and we're going to, again, wait final guidance from U.S. Treasury. So with that, I'll see if Mr. Beck or Mr. Franks or Mr. Dickerson have anything they wanted to add to the presentation.
You handled it well. It's good.
David, anything?
Just as Mr. Hodges mentioned, the, the weekly School of Government calls, at this point, there are more questions than definitive answers on those calls, so they really do continue to preach patience and await the final guidance. And every one of those calls starts out by someone from the School of Government saying that, you know, we think the final guidance will be out any day now, but we don't have a definitive date. So hopefully that comes along before too long, but everybody's basically in a holding pattern right now.
Isn't it, isn't it true, there's one thing that's fairly certain, and that is there are some timeframes in which the money has to be spent, has to be spent by. I'm thinking it's a couple of years or, I know we get a tranche, well, have we gotten both now or just the one? We get one now and one a little bit later, right?
Right. We received the first allocation. The, the funds are supposed to be obligated by 20, the end of 2024.
And spent by?
Spent by the end of 2026, I believe.
Okay, that's what I was, yeah.
For some things, that sounds like a long time, but for some types of projects, it's...
And I wanted to check and see if Attorney Jones had any comments from any of her colleagues that she's been, keep an eye on this.
I've been participating in the office hours, and I am signed up for the six-day class because I cringe every time they say, check with your attorney, when I'm still waiting to, you know, hear about the guidance and, and to use those resources that the league and the School of Government are providing. But there is going to be a lot of intersection of looking at the federal law, the state enabling laws, and then making sure that we can do the program and do the reporting and compliance obligations that also go along with this. A lot of this, the uniform guidance under federal law has a lot of requirements that some of our local programs and projects we haven't done in the past. So there will be a, a large compliance aspect of this as we go forward. So the initial decisions to what to spend the money on, then we have to make sure that we can actually follow through on those and meet all of the obligations.
Thank you. And I think it's fair to say that we're not the Lone Ranger on this thing. All the other municipalities out there are dealing with some of the same issues. Hopefully there can be some cooperative collaboration out there as maybe some municipalities find out certain bits of information and they've found to be workable that'll be shared, hopefully, with others, and we'll learn from each other. Council, questions or comments to either one of these folks? Anything, Phil?
We just hurry up and wait?
I think how appropriate that the screech, break, screeching sound as we showed the cartoon The Simpsons. I mean, you know, you know, with Homer, how appropriate. When I saw that, when I looked at our agenda, I was like, because, I mean, it's easy to tell I was Homer Simpson. It's like, it's just appropriate. The one, you know, Ken mentioned we're not the Lone Ranger on this. I'm trying to figure out how in the heck the government's going to manage this project. All these towns are doing this. I mean, they can't handle half the stuff we got now. But we've got all these towns and municipalities and all this state, this state and all the other states, and all these have these, all these deadlines? I mean, how are they, how are they going to handle this? I just don't understand how they're going to handle or manage it at all. I mean, we know, you know, they've been doing, you know, Tax Day for individuals, April 15th, corporations, October 15th. That's, you know, they're kind of used to that, but this is something new. I'm just going to be amazed as how the, the government is going to manage handling and oversight on this. And I wouldn't be surprised to see those, those dates. You said, I think, the 20, 2024, 2026 be extended because they'll never be able to stay on top of this. I mean, let's look at the money that was given to individuals or companies and all the fraud they found with that, and they're still investigating fraud with that. So thank goodness government will not, shouldn't be much, well, I won't say that, but there should be less fraud with that than some of the businesses. I'm sure some small towns may not know how to manage and have, have the guidance that other towns, like we're fortunate to have, but be patient. Just think of Homer Simpson every time we talk about spending money.
That, that was a School of Government provided slide. That was not one that staff added, so that was, that came with the slides from the School of Government.
It's one of the good jobs.
Comments, questions down here?
I just have to agree with Mr. Singleton. At, you know, it's kind of like, we're going to help you, but we're going to make it so complicated that you don't know if it's really going to be helped by the time it's done. You know, hats off to whoever has to work with it, Ms. Jones, the staff. I'm glad it's not me. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Dellinger or Mr. Vance?
Yes. You don't have something to say. I think we need to really start thinking about this more in earnest. I think the way be patient, thoughtful doesn't mean be idle and do nothing. You can put, you can brainstorm ideas and start working on stuff, just don't get too far down the line. I think one of the things we need to immediately start to prioritize is how are we going to leverage this money? How are we going to leverage this $9 million into $18 million or $20 million or $30 million by partnering, even if we don't know who the partners are, at least to have that as a goal, either in actual matching funds or economic impacts or tax revenue based returns. We need to start thinking about what our objectives or fiscal objectives are for this money. On the community side, I think one thing that is very consistent in the initial, in the law and the guidance that I've read, and there was eight pages on the School of Government site, is affordable housing. And it will be a component, and we will be able to use it for, to address housing affordability. And it's something we've not ever had to do as a town. There are other towns that do it, but we need to start looking at it. We need to either have a committee that starts looking at it and, and start generating lists of ideas and programs that other places are doing, so we can start to learn how to do this. We are in the middle of a housing affordability crisis in this town. We don't feel it yet. We don't see it yet. It's here. If you were to do it, you have to justify what you're trying to do. If you look at teacher salaries like this, we don't pay teachers enough. Police salaries like this, we don't pay them enough. And you look at the average cost of an apartment or home, and it's going like this, you've got a housing affordability problem. There's a lot of, as I said, there's a lot of interpretive, legal interpretive language in here around the constitutional authority in this state to do housing. I only say affordable housing specifically because it conjures a different image of the problem we have. But housing affordability is something that's going to essentially change the nature of Garner. If we can't have teachers live here, police live here, government employees work here, and we need to get on it and not wait, wait for the guidance. Like I said, we've got a problem. This is a potential source of revenue, at least part of it, to address. We can't contract with entities that do this work very well, Passage Home, Habitat for Humanity, there may be other entities and financial institutions across the region. But we need to start looking at this as a real problem, and this is an opportunity and impetus to start looking at it. So as I say, we can, we can wait, but the clock's ticking on, on the town. It's also clicking, you know, ticking for this program. And the sooner we can start getting our heads around what opportunities there are that we can implement, the sooner we can hit the ground running and start, you know, engaging partners and mobilizing some of this stuff. So I, I think we should be more proactive, not get too far down the road where we're committing to anything, but we, we've got to start getting, increasing our vocabulary and verbiage around and experience with housing affordability. That's my two cents. I think we should, another point discussed, maybe forming a committee to look at housing affordability with this being, you know, potential opportunity part of this, but it's something we need to just step up and start taking very, very seriously.
And Mr. Dellinger, we have been working with some of our partners like Wake County. We've got some project ideas, but a lot of that discussion, we think, is probably well-suited for committee work. And so whenever council decides how they want to move forward with that, we would like to bring whoever that is up to speed on some of the initial things that we've already been working on, but just felt premature to bring to a general briefing like tonight.
Yeah. And I've had conversations with other elected officials in the county, and they're all kind of feel like they're in a silo in addressing this problem. And there's a lot of information and brain sharing that could happen, folks who've already done it, to folks who know they need to do it but don't know where to start. But it, we need to sort of make a decision on, on how we're going to tackle this and, and do it with people who are experienced with it. So, so thank you.
Mr. Vance, anything? Nothing. It is fine. I guess, Mr. Dellinger, what you just said reminded me a little bit, and maybe this is not a good analogy, but when was it, a few years back where there was talk about having shovel-ready projects, and if you wanted, you know, some money to spend, you, you get sort of to the head of the line if you've already got those projects that you've identified and are shovel-ready. If I'm understanding, Mr. Dellinger's point is that, you know, discussing and planning and having some ideas of, of ways that we would like to see it spent, and we think we probably could, but not getting ahead of the process until we know that that's what we can do. I think the two can maybe move along dual tracks there at the same time. So I think, I, I think he makes a valid point in terms of us not just sitting back and waiting, and I'm not suggesting that's what we're doing, but looking at the resources we have and, and trying to identify some of those things that we can move on. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I touched on that. Something that go, that will go hand in hand with that. This was mentioned at the Connect Conference. It's a topic discussion was utilities. And of course, extending utilities to the 540 area, but not just that, because that's for the new economic development, is, you know, you've got pump stations that are, that, you know, working with Raleigh that will need upgrades. But if you're also talking about affordable housing, you know, can you extend utilities there and take the cost off a developer or your partner, or whatever it may be, to run those utilities there, because they could be expensive depending on where it is? And we know where the land is, and it's running out of infield land, so you're going to have to go somewhere down White Oak or down 50 or down Old Stage, which all will need extended utility, continued extension of utility. So I think a lot of, a lot of, and some considerations will be tied into utilities because it is directly related to that. But also, again, that was mentioned at the Connect Conference, talked about pump stations. And, you know, if you're going to extend these utilities, you may need to help upgrade or build a constructed pump station. I know they cost millions and millions of dollars, and, and, you know, you may be a partner with Raleigh, but I think that's something that's, can go hand in hand with that, but it can go to help resolve other current issues we have, Raleigh has. And Raleigh, you know, they've got our system and Wake Forest and Javelin and Knightdale and Wendell and, and Roswell and Raleigh. So they have a lot of, they have a lot of needs that they do a pretty good job at staying on top of. But I wouldn't be surprised to see utilities be one of the major expenditures of this plan in this area.
Currently, Raleigh is not planning to use any of their ARP dollars for utility expansions.
For them.
For the system.
For their system.
For the system that we're a part of. So they were, they were one of our first phone calls when we learned about this, and, and they're very willing to partner with us on any improvements that we want to fund or jointly fund within our service area. But unless something has changed, at the last conversation we had with them, there were no plans for them to invest any of their ARP dollars in those systems. I think because there is a utility, it's, it's different when you're trying to use these dollars in an established utility. I think there's, there's some challenges with that, so I'm not giving them an easy outfit, giving us that answer, but I think there's, it's harder than, than it may seem on the surface, but they were receptive that if we wanted to make an investment in pieces of the system that could benefit our area, they were very willing to talk to us about it.
Okay.
Because the, the utility system is supposed to be a self-supporting enterprise utility fund.
And otherwise funded by the, whomever chooses to extend it, developer or otherwise. And so that's the, that's, I think, the, the challenge that we've got there. The mayor did mention, or Mr. Dellinger mentioned silos. Mr. Mayor made me think of it as well. One of the other partners we, we've had on a slide probably but didn't mention that is helping us get a lot of this information together is Triangle J Council of Government. They're doing a, they've got a group focused on helping us with this information. We have some regular meetings with them. They are also helpful in that they are, they've pulled together a grants team that while we're not contributing financially to the, the personnel, they're, they're accumulating some of the grant opportunities that in Rodney's first slide where we said that third bucket were federal funds that are trickling down through existing programs or other ways. They're already helping get the word out about those. We're sitting in on webinars. We're trying to triage whether any of those are applicable to us. So, so we're not waiting completely. We, we pretty much, our hands are tied to wait for the second bucket, the state funds. There's just no guidance. But the federal funds, we're already participating, staff on many levels at, at the town, are participating in things that Triangle J is organizing and that other partners are organizing to help us know where some of these funds that were just given directly to a federal agency, they've already found ways to trickle that funding out. So we're, we're monitoring those.
Is, is Wake County eligible for funds as well, or is it just municipality, like towns and cities?
So yes, Wake, Wake County.
All the counties got allocation.
The commissioners, there are several that are very interested in housing affordability, and they'd be a good partner to look at some of that. And if they were devoting some funds... And if they were devoting some funds, and maybe there may be some utility. They don't really do a lot of that, but infrastructure, infrastructure money. So it, I think it'd be worth having a conversation with them, I'm sure engage in some. But I know there's a lot of interest in it.
Because counties have public health, they got a, a pretty good allocation of funding.
And the first decision that Wake County Commissioners authorized were a number of studies to go out and study more in-depth some of the needs of the community. Because as the, as the manager mentioned, a lot of their potential uses are going to be health services and, and other things. And so they, some of their early spends have been to authorize some studies of the community to better understand more detailed specifics of, of areas they may need to channel their funding.
And just to, I guess, comment further, the Triangle J has monthly meetings. I attend the delegates meeting, we just had a meeting about a week ago, I guess it was. And what you mentioned, John, you know, was, was a brief topic of discussion that they have some resources, they're going to look at ways they can get more information out. And I'm sure staff members are, are aware of some of those, even more so than I am, so. Okay, anything else on this issue? Well, you, it certainly won't be the last time you hear it. And in many ways, we're fortunate to, to, to have these resources. And I'm sure everybody sitting at this table wants to make sure we use them well and wisely within the guidelines, once we figure out what they are. Okay, thank you David and John. Okay, council, I know sometimes we try to take a recess in about a couple of hours, but we have one item left on our agenda. I'd be inclined to maybe go ahead and recognize our parks director and let us proceed. Is that okay? Does anybody need to take a quick break?
Good.
Okay. Well, good evening, Maria, good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity. We're bringing to you tonight, and Megan Young from our Recreation Superintendent is joining me here tonight. What we're bringing to you tonight is a proposal for a staffing update to our department. There we go. And just to give you a little bit of background, as you may know, we rely heavily on supplemental staff. I hate not seeing Mr. Singleton.
That's all right, I'm looking at you.
Okay. We rely on supplemental staff for a variety of tasks that are related to the programs and services that we offer to the public. Some of the positions that we have that are supplemental are the facility attendants at our various centers, the desk attendants. We also have our rec leaders, which are the ones that provide program support. And then sort of the seasonal boathouse staff, as well as the technicians that provide support to the G-PAC operations. Most are compensated at ten dollars or less per hour. And because of various state, as well as federal health regulations, they're capped to about nineteen hours per week. Changing schedules to meet the department needs, as well as their own availability. As you may know, we're not the only ones that are facing some recruiting challenges. I think there's a limited availability of applicants that are interested in part-time work. In general, we're sort of competing in a marketplace with retail, with some public health entities, with daycares, with a lot of competition in terms of low-wage work, workers. And the most, the positions that are most impacted are really the desk and the facility attendants, as well as our rec leaders. And the absence of the staff is really challenging for us in terms of the programs that we can actually offer. Once we recruit them, retaining them, it's also a bit of a, of a challenge. Primarily because there's plenty of opportunities out there for full-time work, compensated at higher rates. And then certainly the, the changing schedule that we operate under because of our seasonality or the types of programs that we have certainly impacts the availability of those who we have been able to, to recruit. There is a cost to the town in all this. Certainly recruiting takes time and expense, background checks, staff time, so on and so forth. The onboarding and training, we do train our staff on our various sort of computer systems and customer service practices. And then our staff just spend quite a bit of time trying to juggle the various schedules and the supplemental staff to make sure that we can have front-facing staff to, to deal with our customers. So the recommended change that we're bringing to you this after, this evening is to create three new full-time positions in our staff complement. Two would be administrative support specialist as part of our youth and athletics component. And they will be based at the Garner Rec Center. That's a grade seventeen in the town's compensation classification. And then one outdoor education, recreation program specialist for the White Deer Nature Center. And again, I think the sort of responsibilities of the administrative support specialist are front desk operations. As you know, we're gearing to be open seventy-eight hours a week, so two shifts essentially to deal with that, as well as in the future, once we sort of get over as much as we can the COVID disruption to help with our tournament and league activities. The recreation program specialist will be based at White Deer Park, as I noted earlier, supporting park rentals, as well as the program, public programs that are held both there and at Lake Benson Park. And will serve as a backup for the manager at that particular location. We believe that the cost of these positions can be absorbed in the fiscal year twenty-two budget through supplemental salary funds, as well as salary savings that we have from vacant full-time positions. But there are financial considerations down the road. And that is sort of, Mike Francis helped us come up with the numbers of the total recurring cost per the positions. And you can see that in the information that is in front of you. And Mike is, I believe, on the line, and I'm going to put him on the spot and ask him to brief you quickly on the projected five-year impact of these positions.
Yeah, this is just the five-year projection that we do based on that FY twenty to recommend or adopt the budget. So this is just to give council a feel of, this is where we're at based on the recommended budget or the adopted budget. So, you can see the line at the top under expenditures of new personnel, five hundred and ten thousand dollars. So, this would be eating into those dollars that we've already allocated towards new positions. So, while this is still a projection, just giving you some insight that, you know, it would have a financial impact in, eat into our already limited flexibility. As you can see in FY twenty-three, we have a projected shortfall, shortfall of about sixty-four thousand dollars. So, it would have a long-term financial impact. But it, it certainly was in the, the town's ability to absorb this based on a need. But did want to make you aware that, you know, there would be an impact and a recurring impact.
So the next steps is answering any questions that you may have this evening, as well as in the next, you know, few days, few weeks. We'd love your feedback, your approval, hopefully down the road. And if you decide to grant approval, then we'll work with the Human Resources Department to develop a timeline for recruitment. And with that, I will try to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Behringer, do you have any questions or comments?
I do, just help me to understand a little bit, the action we're asking, being asked to take is to consider approval of the conversion of supplemental hours to, to fund these positions. What, I'm sorry, I don't understand supplemental hours. I understand that concept, but what supplemental hours are we converting to new positions?
Yes, ma'am. So we have in our various sort of units in our department, each unit has a certain number of dollars allocated for supplemental hours, whether it's for front desk support or for coaches in, in our leagues and so on and so forth. So we'll take some of those, and that includes some hours that are allocated, for example, for the front desk support. We'll use some of those hours to fund these full-time positions. It's kind of, you know, it's a budgetary arrangement.
How much will using those hours help fund the position, a percentage-wise?
I would say, actually do have that number here.
While she's looking for that, I was just going to add, we classify our personnel into different categories. We have full-time, we have some that may be considered part-time, although we don't use that designation a lot. Then we have supplemental personnel that are, only work like a thousand something hours per year. Their hours are capped, they typically do not receive benefits, and they can have varied hours. And a lot of times with supplementals, we'll hire multiple people in a certain position and then we'll use them as needed, as their schedule allows. So they don't work set hours all the time.
So if we create these new positions, the supplemental people won't be filling those positions?
We would, we're replacing those supplemental personnel with the full-time personnel.
And many of those are currently vacant because we can't find people to fill them. So part of the reason for doing this is to increase our odds of being able to attract full-time staff and increase our odds of keeping them once they're here, like Maria said, after we've gotten them onboarded. And also the job we're asking them to do, it's really, it's, it's a lot to ask a supplemental person to be responsible for opening or closing facilities like the new rec center sometimes on their own. And so we think it's just, it's partly because we, we can't find the people to fill those supplementals. But it also just, it, it gives us an opportunity to empower our full-time staff to take on more of a, a role within the organization.
Okay, thank you.
This is also very similar to opportunities we've brought to you before mid-year. And inspections is one that we've come to you before and said we've got, we want to convert supplemental fire inspector hours to a permanent position, code compliance. And so we've done this type of conversion in other departments before. I think you just probably haven't heard it as, as many times from, from Parks and Rec. Coincidentally, they, they use the most supplementals of any department. So there's actually a lot, a lot more of those hours and just the need has arisen to do this.
Okay, Mr. Singleton, anything? Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
I think Ms. Munoz Blanco was looking for an answer to that.
Yes, to your answer as to two things. One, the, the entry salaries for the permanent positions will be higher than ten dollars an hour. So in terms of the budget impact, we would be able to cover with supplemental dollars about fifty percent of the cost of the positions. Supplemental staff does not have health or pension benefits, and those represent a, a nice chunk of change.
Okay.
About thirty-six percent or so.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Singleton.
From simple math, you basically are taking four supplemental positions and making two full-time positions. That's, I mean, that's the simple way. If you did nineteen hours, that's seventy-six hours, we're talking seventy-eight hours a week. You're taking four part-time, make two full-time, basically, what it is. Something, something we did, I know this past year with Public Works, so they had trouble with the same thing, supplemental, part-time, and converted it all to full-time. So, it's all, all logical, all reasonable. And basically you said that the impact should be absorbed by the department, both this year and next year.
Now, this year will be absorbed by the department because, again, we have savings. Next year, there will be an impact in the overall.
Right, okay, I was looking wrong, I was looking at two different departments.
It'll be part of the budget considerations.
Next year.
As we look to provide you a balanced budget.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Matthews.
That's me, sir.
Okay. Mr. Dillinger.
So these are basically two facility manager positions for the rec center, right? I mean, they're going to manage the operations during, they'll be in charge.
They'll be almost like the primary point of contact for the public, for anything related to registrations, becoming a member, questions about classes, making sure that the facility is sort of in good shape.
Okay. And just a general question, what kind of career-level opportunity is this for someone? Like, how many years of experience do they have coming into this? What are their other qualifications? Just kind of get a feel for.
So they're both entry-level positions. And of course, we want somebody who has some interest in the recreation space. And there is sort of, as they can experience, there is career growth. Oh, sorry. There is career growth opportunities.
Thank you.
Mr. Vance.
It appears logical and reasonable to do, it's something that we're familiar with doing, so, reasonable.
Okay. So, so far, we haven't had to change the hours. I'm thinking of the rec center or, or cut back. And I didn't know if, if we don't get this problem resolved, is, is that a, is that a possib- possibility? We may have to do something of that type.
At this point, we have, we have had to reduce some of the rentals because we don't have, again, supplemental staff to be handling them. But we're not looking at reducing the hours at the rec center.
Okay.
Actually, one of the things I was going to cover in manager reports, which we're actually about to expand, expand the hours in the rec center in October. So I was going to go over that, or if you want to do that, that's fine.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. Yes, October, you may recall, I don't know, a few months ago, we came forth with a plan for sort of a staggered opening. And October is when we get to the seventy-eight hours. We need to do this. We'll start opening Tuesdays and Thursdays at six o'clock in the morning, closing at eight. Mondays and Wednesdays from seven to eight, and then we'll open Sundays. And also Friday and Saturdays, but those are the expanded hours.
All right, yeah, yeah, I knew those were expanding, I didn't know how much in the wind, yeah.
Yeah, we currently didn't have any Sunday hours, so that'll be a good addition to add Sunday hours.
So come October first, we'll have expanded hours.
Okay. All right, well, the action that is asked for here, I believe, is to, is to support the recommendation.
We approve the conversion of supplemental hours to fund and create the three full-time positions for Parks and Rec Culture Resources.
Second.
I heard two seconds on that, but don't know there's need for any further discussion. But before we vote, anybody have a other question or comment? Okay, hearing none. If you favor the motion as, as presented, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. Okay, the motion passes, sure enough, Mr. Hodges.
Just as a reminder for mayor and the council, these will come back to you on a consent agenda just with the formality of adding the positions in name and in position count. You've seen a number of those lately as we've been making adjustments. But just as a reminder, we appreciate you moving ahead with action tonight. But you will take up another action on a consent agenda just to go through the formality for HR that Maria mentioned earlier.
While you're here, I would just mention, and I think some other council members maybe, I was down there Friday night and I thought the opportunity, of course, not only to participate in some of the other activities in the downwind area, but having the rec center open and people going through and seeing the resources we have there was a, was a good thing for us and for the rec center.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The credit to the success of the evening goes to Megan and the youth and athletics team for all the work that they do.
Yeah, good job, good job, thank you. Okay, I think, let's see, we can wrap this up. We'll go to manager reports at this time.
All right. And that was going to be one of my reports to talk about the success of the night market in the Garner Rec Center Community Open House. I believe I heard we're estimating a thousand, about a thousand folks came through just the rec center. And the market I heard was busy and very lively and a great success. So, we look forward to continuing that. The other thing I wanted to report, you have the pending agenda for October at the back of your packet. Just note that that work session date is October the twenty-sixth on the last page there. It says September twenty-eighth.
I think a revised one should be at their place.
Okay, you do have a revised one at your place, okay, all right. So you can see those items. One thing I wanted to report is that the town did receive some funds, some bike ped funds. And I thought I had that right here in front of me. As you remember, we came to you, probably been, it's been a while, asking to participate in a DOT grant funding opportunity. And we did, we were awarded that. And I will, see if I can find my information.
Are those state funds?
I have it right here, I have it right here. The, so the planning department applied for funding this past June through the DOT Planning Grant Initiative Program. It has a matching grant. The town was awarded the seventy-thirty split, so DOT would pay seventy and the town would pay thirty. And that will go towards completion of a comprehensive pedestrian plan. And our budget amendment, we'll have that in place to cover our match, which I believe, um... Do you have that amount?
It's twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, twenty-one thousand, for some reason it printed and cut it off. Yeah, 21,000, for some reason it printed and cut it off. But 21,000 would be the town's match.
Okay, was there anything else, Mr.?
That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Dickerson? Okay.
Let me see, let me make sure, there might be some.
Okay, while you're looking, we can come back to the council reports. I'll start with Mr. Matthews.
Nothing's come out of mine last time. With the veterans thing, thank you.
You used up all your time last time, right?
Sir?
I said you used up all your time last time.
Yes, I do. I'll pick it up another time.
Mr. Vance, I'll go to you next.
No, sir, not tonight.
Ms. Singleton.
Sure, I was going to say, mentioning the downtown market was a success down there. And a good crowd, the people in the rec center was neat to see. They had them playing basketball in one court, they had them playing pickleball in one court, and I think volleyball in one court. So they had people doing all kinds of activities, young and old, people walking the track, people pushing strollers on the track, which is great. So, and then the market was very well-done, well-attended. Thumbs up to everyone involved with that, it's really successful. And then the next one, they got two more planned in October and into November. So to confirm, is the one in November, now is that the Friday after Thanksgiving, or is that changed?
Yeah, it is Friday after Thanksgiving.
And as we've mentioned with council before, council agreed to let us do the ceremonial tree lighting that night as part of the market. So it will be a slightly different format than in previous years. But because of the temporary location of the tree being where the market's held, it seemed to be a good fit for that.
Okay. And the one question, since we're getting into October, I think I may already know the answer, we're at the October market. But are we going to have the usual October, the trick-or-treat on the trails, are we doing that this year?
We do plan to do that, I think we started registration, but I don't.
We're waiting to see if we get enough vendors, and Maria may have an update on that. But currently, we had not had a lot of response from the vendors who provide the setup and the candy. But she may have more current numbers.
Yeah, so we've had the call for the vendors, the invitation to be part of the event for a couple of weeks out. We usually get between 60 and 70. We have 15 as of this morning. So we'll do, again, their deadline to apply, it's October the 8th. So we are hopeful, and we'll be encouraging, again, sort of checking in to see. We do know that a couple of vendors have noted that this year they're not going to do it because of COVID, but they want to be invited again next year. So it could be that people are still not quite comfortable with COVID.
All right, thanks for the update, I appreciate it.
One thing that staff has talked about, though, council, because that goes out in our printed material sometimes ahead, even if we just said we can't do this this year, is there some alternative, something that we can do as a drive-up or something, just that if people do show up? So we still don't know if we'll have the resources to do that. But staff's been looking at what are the alternatives we could do. Because we know the word will not get to everyone if we cancel an event that typically has the type of turnout that one has. So we'll keep you posted on alternate plans.
Well, you can have them walk to the rec center and pick up food anyway. I might not say that, I might, I might our staff now. But, I mean, you know, you can have it on the market that night, it's two nights before Halloween, you say? You could do, you can get people back in the rec center again. I'll be quiet.
Okay, Ms. Behringer.
Only one thing, I already mentioned to Mr. Hodges, there is a broken tree limb down where Aversboro and 7th Avenue meet. It's on Aversboro, it's been there for several weeks, and it's laying on a power line. All the leaves have already turned brown, so we need to do something about getting that out of the way. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dillinger.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone for the support on the night market. The DGAs worked with the Raleigh folks on, and also the rec center was awesome. I lost in one-on-one basketball to Mr. Hodges' son, that was not good, but it was fun. Couple of other quick things, with the Art Around Town, we were able to get a sponsor. And I think it's important to mention that, Hometown Realty was a sponsor for that. So their logo appears, it's sort of a plug, but it should be a plug because we can only do that kind of stuff with those types of partnerships, so we appreciate that. And another note, on another project we're working on in downtown, we've recently been awarded a $12,000 grant for another mural. So that's from the North County Arts Council. So I want to thank Mari for doing the work on the application and following up with all that. It's just exciting to see so much activity going on downtown. And a lot of people sitting up here had a lot of input on that over the years and kind of set the stage for where we are. So very appreciative to everyone, and that's all I've got.
You've been in the middle of some of the discussions and so forth with the mural, I know. So thank you for your efforts there. I would just comment briefly, yeah, the event down there was a wonderful opportunity to walk them down the street. It seemed like sort of a homecoming weekend, you could stop and chat in several different places. Folks were just chatting about any variety of things. I had, at least one person said he was considering moving to our town, and wanted the mayor to tell him why he should do that. And I think I did a good job of that. He sent me a note later on, thanking for the information, and he felt that he was well-received and really enjoyed the occasion. So it was a nice reflection of our town, I think. The only other thing I would say is I want to thank council and also remind council of opportunities that are still out there for presentations as it relates to our bond program. And I know several of you, maybe all of you have participated at some point. But as you are available, there are a few more, I'm not sure exactly how many more we have. I know we have at least a couple remaining this week. So as your schedule allows, I encourage you to assist with that and do what you can, okay? All right, that's all I have, anything else for the good of the group?
You want to let Mr. Vance?
Oh, excuse me, did I miss Mr. Vance again?
That's right, he asked him first, that's right.
Forgetful sometimes, but not forgetful. So with that, I'll see if Mr. Vance wants to give me a motion to adjourn this meeting. Okay, moved and seconded properly. If you favor the motion to adjourn, please vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, I declare this work session, special session to be adjourned. Signee die.